And if we can have a moment of silence or a moment of silent reflection for the following. Mr. Marvin Henkinson, he passed away on November 20th, 2025. Marvin was a longtime community service volunteer in Greece. Marvin was also a big part of the Greece neighboring Chapters and Lions Club. Please keep Marvin and his family in your thoughts and prayers. And also Salvatore, known as Sal Noto, passed away on November 13th, 2025. Sal was a dedicated Greece Central District employee from September 1998 until June 2002, when he resigned as an assistant principal. Sal was an avid triathlete and enjoyed staying active throughout his life. Please keep Sal and his family in your thoughts and prayers.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Bailey. Do you remember what I asked you last month? Are you ready? I'm gonna do it now. I need to laugh.
All right. Since the weather outside's a little chilly, what do you call a snowman who is having a temper tantrum? A meltdown.
Thank you, Bailey. Every month, every month. And with that, can I, so let me move the agenda to the table, please. Moved by Ms. Board Member Felzrano, seconded by Vice President Stensel. Any additions, corrections, deletions to the agenda as presented? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to, we have our student leaders here from Odyssey Middle School. Welcome this evening. Come on down.
What's something great about Odyssey?
Um, I love the classes and I think this school's really fun.
The food is really good here.
I like it how it's like not over publicated like some other schools and I like how like most of the kids are really nice.
What do you like about Odyssey?
I like the vibes and also like some classes are like the funnest thing ever, I swear. Like unlike last year.
What is something you like about Odyssey?
I like the snack line and I like my teacher's sense of humor.
Their activities, like the events and like um Monday. Yeah, the fun events.
Um, they take very good care of their students.
What is something that made you smile today?
Probably my friends.
The lunchroom food.
Seeing my best friend Lauren.
The celebration I have in front of my friends.
Hi, I'm Aleah and I presented to you guys for like two years now. At our open house, we had a fun night on the track where families could meet all of our teachers. There was a lot of different activities where our whole community could participate in. There were food trucks like cotton candy, meeting a leopard, face painting and more. Students could sign up for clubs and other activities. We also had a spirit week where we show our leopard pride and celebrate it together.
Hi, I'm Alexis and I went to the Odyssey skating at Horizon. It was so much fun. We got to play arcade games, laser tag, skate and have fun with our friends in the jungle gym.
Hi. Come here, I'm short. Hi, I'm Madeline. Here at Odyssey, we want to make sure everyone feels appreciated and how they do things. So some of the celebrations we do are the end of month celebrations or the pep rally. How our end of month celebrations work is for the month, we have a focus. Like for November, our focus was no inappropriate physical contact. And as long as you did not have any inappropriate physical contact, you got to go to a during the school day celebration for one period. Our pep rally was also fun and interactive as well. The Odyssey Academy Homecoming Dance was so fun. Both myself and Alexis attended the Homecoming Dance. Some of the activities were games, a photo booth where we could take photos with our friends, a dance party where we could request songs and concessions where you could buy pizza, snacks, drinks and more.
Hi. I'm Eva. I was able to do cross-country this fall. It was very fun to run and meet new friends. We go to the McQuade Invitational each year along with other local meets. Some of the other sports offered to middle school students this year include bowling, modified cheerleading, modified basketball, modified volley- volleyball, the swim team and many more.
Avid is a class we can learn about college early on and be prepared for the future. It teaches, it helps teach you skills to use in college and your life. One of our activities that we did in the eighth grade was a field trip to town hall. We had police, went to the police station, the library, the historical, the soil reputation society and I forgot the rest.
This club is always so much fun. No matter what we make, it's always a good chance to socialize and make new friends.
Come here, I'm short. Art club is so fun and entertaining. I love that we get to make a fun craft and also talk to friends.
I love art clubs so much. It is so much fun and I'm always looking forward to it every month. Always making fun stuff and socializing. It is so much fun, especially when you get to get your creative juices flowing.
Hi again. I'm in seventh grade this year and I got the character Young Kangaroo. This is my second year doing the musical. It's always so much fun. You meet new people and expand your skills.
Hi, I'm in this year's musical, Susical, and I got the character Thing One. This is so amazing and I'm so lucky to have this opportunity, especially as a sixth grader. This is why Odyssey is such a great place.
The Greece Marching Band consists of students from all of the schools, yet we have practices right here at Odyssey. Practices run late, but we always get a lot of things done. Greece was even first in the state for a day. When we went to championships, we got third in the state for large school too. Odyssey is a great school with so many opportunities for our students. Thank you so much for listening.
If you guys could come up and do a picture with the Odyssey staff and with the board and the superintendent, the deputy superintendent and who has Odyssey? Dr. Baker? I might make you do something. All right, next up we have our union comments. The wonderful Mr. Eberts is here. President of GTA, see you, welcome Brian.
I'm gonna remember that you said wonderful. I'm gonna tell everybody you said that, so it's gotta be true. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, district leadership, Superintendent Smalling, other staff and the greater community members. Thank you for coming tonight. I wanted to begin by acknowledging the board's decision to establish a Code of Conduct Committee made up of district office personnel, board members, community members and myself representing the Greece Teachers Association. I chose to join for a very important reason, to represent the staff, students and community of Greece, drawing upon my deep and longstanding connection to this district. I grew up in Greece, attended Greece schools, spent my professional career employed here wonderfully and am a proud parent of three sons who have gone through the Greece schools. Those experiences collectively shape how I view our schools, our challenges and our opportunities. They also make it clear to me that I have a responsibility to participate and advocate. This committee will be offering recommendations to the district's Code of Conduct Committee and while our role is advisory, I'm generally hopeful that the perspectives we bring forward will prove helpful, insightful, supportive of both students and staff across the district. I look forward to continuing to represent GTA members and to ensuring that the experiences of those closest to the work are fully reflected in the process. As we discussed, the importance of safe and supportive environments in our schools, it's also important to remember the needs of our broader community. This time of year, many Greece families face food insecurity and other challenges. And one meaningful way we can support our neighbors is by contributing to the Greece Ecumenical Food Shelves located at 500 Maiden Lane. I encourage anyone who is able to consider donating food, resources or time, a quick online search will provide all the information needed to get involved. Even small acts of generosity make a significant difference for families right here in Greece. Also, the Diversity Inclusion Leadership Network, along with our non-for-profit 501(c)(3), the GTCP, is holding a Hoodies for the Holidays initiative. We all know our six through 12 students aren't exactly the coat-wearing individuals, but certainly will wear hoodies during the colder times. So if you have any extra hoodies or want to buy new hoodies, please drop them off at any middle school or high school and just label them, let's see, Hoodies for Holidays and December 12th is the end time for those collections. Finally, as we approach the holiday season, I want to extend my warmest wishes to all members of the GCSD community, students, staff, administrators, board members and families. Make the week, may the weeks ahead bring rest, connection and joy. On behalf of the Greece Teachers Association, I wish you all a safe, peaceful and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, President Eberts. Next up, we have GASSA, Gabby Graves and Christina Cristofori. Welcome this evening.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Gabby Graves and this is Christina Cristofori. We are proud assistant principals at Odyssey Academy and we're here representing our GASSA today. GASSA board member, or GASSA members have been really having a laser-like focus on instruction and PLCs lately, more specifically in all of our buildings as well as throughout departments and district office.
At Odyssey Academy, we've been focused on goal number one, which is an academic goal. We've started a writing protocol that we are working on in our middle school. We also are focused on goal number two, which is establishing an effective PLC. We are using Darfur's three big ideas and four critical questions.
We've also recently adopted the newcomer program for grades six through 12 at Odyssey Academy. This has been a big transition, but we've been off to a great start for sure. The staff has embraced the program and really worked collectively with district office and multilingual education department in order to advance the instruction that's happening there. We've collaborated and worked on different types of instruction, including the Bridges Academic to Success with BOSI's too. Students are engaged in the ELA curriculum, our core bridges, we're using ERLA and really dialing into our Citizens in Action curriculum as well.
Holmes Road Grade Level PLCs meet every Thursday to unpack standards, look at student assessment results and discuss instructional strategies to support students. Our Guided Coalition also meets once a month to support each and plan and reflect on PLC progress.
Autumn Lane has been really focused on goal two and improving their collective understanding for PLCs. They're proud to report that they are working hard to move from proficient to accomplished on their collective understanding of DeFor's PLC. The Guiding Coalition continues to co-plan staff meetings. To date, 100% of the PLCs are focused on at least one of the essential questions. They're analyzing data and creating proactive interventions during their win time.
Arcadia High School has every department in a PLC by content or course. Each PLC has a wig and a scoreboard. They meet in PLCs bi-weekly and are charting our progress regularly. Here are the pictures to highlight the work that they are doing.
Craig Hill has been working closer with the Mathosa Lisa Gross during their PLC time in order to create and have focus-aligned CFAs in alignment with the district's standards. They've been doing the standard unpacking work as well and they're gonna start analyzing, analyzing, gathering the data from the assessments and the CFAs that they've created. The Department of Humanities, both Social Studies and ELA, has been really dialed in and focused on our core grades six through eight. They've been focusing on vocabulary. That's also something that we've been working a lot on in leadership as well. And for literary texts, they are expected to describe character traits. And for informational texts, students should be able to describe the relationship between events, ideas, concepts, language and time.
At Arcadia Middle, each month, Arcadia staff track key lead measures, including PLC meeting consistency. By collecting monthly data, we can monitor how often PLCs meet and identify trends. So far, we've seen an increase in consistent PLC meetings across the building. We've also asked teams to be open about barriers that prevent weekly meetings. By naming these challenges, we are able to problem solve together and improve the conditions that support regular, effective PLC collaboration.
And then finally, English Village. Arcadia Avid students actually went to English Village and the students read stories and participated in a co-created project together. And the November School Reading Challenge at English Village has produced over 2,520 books collectively read so far.
Thank you. All right, Gus. I have nobody here from Gus signed up, nobody from AgSAP and nobody from Teamsters. All right, rolling into Residence Forum. Ms. Lohner, you're up. Welcome.
Hello. I am a grandmother to seven grandchildren in the Greece School District and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of their parents. The district does a great job of communicating with families in so many ways, but it's a frustration to many parents because they have to log into many different apps in order to communicate with various teachers, schools, activity advisors. There are at least eight different methods that are required. Seesaw, Remind, Email, My School Box, Pick My Kid, Google Classroom, Infinite Campus and whatever method off-site people might choose to use, like coaches and advisors. Eight apps, each with its own username, each with its own password. Perhaps there's a way to whittle that list down a little bit. Remind and Seesaw essentially do the same things, but teachers use different parts of each. Infinite Campus has the capacity to do what Google Classroom does on the parent's side. For parents, all this information could be in one place. Fewer apps means fewer logins and perhaps fewer subscriptions for the district to purchase. We are aware that Parent Square pulls at least five of these apps into one place and has some other great features. On behalf of the Greece families, when the contracts come up for renewal, perhaps you can consider streamlining, streamlining the communication process. Because in the case of communication apps, the communication apps, more is not better, it's just confusing. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Lohner. I'm gonna call Superintendent Smalling. He'd like to address some of what you said.
Thank you for coming up and speaking and I just wanted to say we hear you, loud and clear. And we recognize the issue as well and as we are working currently for a new website, part of the features that interests us in that website is a feature that you just described. So we're looking into it and trying to remedy the issue that I just really wanted you to know. We are aware of it, recognize it and are looking for solutions. So, thank you.
Next up, we have Kevin Woodbury from the Greece Legion Post 468 Baseball. Welcome, Kevin.
This is my enforcement team, so. Good evening. My name's Kevin Woodbury. I'm the vice commander of the American Legion Greece Post 468. Some of you may remember me. I was here in August. We brought our trophies in from the American Legion Baseball. Our senior team went to the national championships and finished eighth in the country. Very, very impressive. It's generated a lot of interest in American Legion Baseball, so much so that we've added another team to the local league and for the first time in our history, we have a junior league start. We just started. We have five teams in it. And of course, Greece Post 468 snapped up the first team. So we have two teams now. A lot of our success is because of you folks. We were allowed to use Greece Athena High School as our home field and it made it great through the entire season. We're asking for your support this year, 2026, because we now have two teams we have to support. We're requesting that maybe you can let us, allow us to use two facilities for our teams. We don't have a full schedule yet, I don't believe. Yes, pardon me. Let me introduce this. This is Jim Capalupo. He's the coach of our senior team. And Chad, yep, Coco, who's the coach of our junior team. And of course, Chad's enforcers, like I said, from the junior team. We are going to continue supporting baseball, obviously. We had the national, the state championships here in Monroe County for the first time ever. We did very well and we did so well. We're gonna do it again next year. And we're also gonna do the junior championship. So we're gonna have two state championships here next year. Lot of, lot of baseball. I have a few more things I wanted to come up. I'm done with baseball. I gotta move on to another thing. We have a program with the American Legion called Boy State, where we send four young high school juniors to a week-long camp where they learn responsibilities as franchise citizens. As soon as they actually run a government, they become, have their own city and they, all facets of it are run by these students for a week. Helps them learn Americanism and government and all that, things that they can use later on in life. We would like your help to pick out these four students. They will be, we will pick up all tab for it. They don't have to pay anything. It's just we would like them to attend. One last thing. We have five scholarships that we will be giving out to one student at each one of our high schools. And we would like, again, your help picking out those students. We, we really wanna give back to our, our community. It's given so much to us and we want to keep this as a family. If you have any questions, we have a website. Please leave a message. I, I'm the one who runs it, so I get all the mail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woodbury. I'm gonna have you, you called my board clerk today. If you can call her back tomorrow and leave your contact information. I don't know if she still has it or not. Do you still have his number or no? Oh, Bill called. All right. If you could, I'll have Bill give Lori your contact information and I'll have somebody reach out to you about the baseball fields. And one of my assistant superintendents will reach out about the scholarships in Boy State. Or the deputy. Maybe I'll delegate to the deputy.
Kevin forgot to mention, we also have Girls State, so we were looking for four girls to send off.
Perfect. Deputy Superintendent Fleming is all over that. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Have a good evening. All right, next up, this one hits close to home for me. We're gonna do a district recognition. Mr. Richardson, why don't I have you come down up front here, assume the position that, you know, Assistant Superintendent Larson makes all our new employees take. It's a hot seat, yep. We're gonna put a little star, I think, there and put Gina's name on it, so everybody can stand on it. Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. So, on November 6th, while Dave was on his way home from work, a call came in at approximately 5:30 for a person not conscious, not breathing in a dialysis center. Dave immediately went to the firehouse and responded to call with two other firefighters. At the scene, Dave jumped in, took over CPR, which had been started prior to his arrival. Advanced life support had also arrived and they were triaging the victim. While Dave was doing compressions, the victim's heart restarted and a pulse was discovered. Mr. Richardson remained with the patient, providing basic life support to the 66-year-old male and supporting the advanced life support team. He also assisted the packing of the patient for ambulance transport and continued basic life support in the ambulance on the way to the hospital. And for those reasons, the Board of Education and Greece Central School District, with great pride and gratitude and thank you for your outstanding service, dedication and commitment in serving the students, families and the entire Greece community, your immediate response to an emergency, assisted in saving a life. For that, we're very appreciative, Dave, and thank you. If you could have the board, Superintendent Deputy. All right, can I, so let me move the staffing to the table, please. Moved by Vice President Stensel, seconded by Board Member Seaman. Is there any comments, questions, concerns on staffing? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to tenure, can I, so let me move the tenure to the table, please. Moved by Ms. Lake, seconded by Board Member Butler. Are there any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to 2.03, GTA MOAs, additional FTEs. Can I, so let me move that to the table, please. Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Mr. Butler. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to 2.04, Gus, MOA for the addition of a project manager title. Can I, so let me move that to the table. Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Vice President Stensel. Is there any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to 4.01, New York Inspires Graduation Initiative. Superintendent Smalling.
Right, I'd like to ask Dr. Zaffet's up. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. So tonight's presentation is likely the first in several presentations on this state initiative over the course of the next few years at least. We have a group of people, of course, who I would like to recognize prior to getting into the presentation, who have been keeping up to speed on the latest and working a little more over the past couple of months. But this group originally got together in November of last year, when this initiative was first announced in Albany and has been following along and now we have some actionable items that we are going to present to you this evening. So, New York Inspires is the name of graduation measures initiative. And as you can see in the logo there, this was a charge by the commissioner, actually, that started in 2019. So pre-pandemic, the commissioner charged the state with really re-looking at graduation measures in New York State to match the kind of emerging future of the 21st century. So what exactly does that mean? The Blue Ribbon Commission, which was a group of people that was put together by the New York State Education Department, spent several years spent several years going around the state, doing surveys, doing focus groups, during, doing information gathering to try to put together, put together a program to, to change the graduation measures in New York State to be modernized. So modernized education was one of the things that the stakeholders said that they wanted. Make students future-ready and have excellence for all students. And how were they going to do that? So the proposal in November of last year unveiled these four quote-unquote transformations that the Commission recommended to the State Education Department to, to accomplish these goals. More on each of these as we go through the presentation, but just very briefly, the four transformations are to adopt a portrait of a graduate through New York State, which is, as you'll see, very similar to the profile of a graduate that we currently have in our strategic plan, to take a look at credits, redefine credits, what it means to get a credit, decouple Regents' assessments from graduations, so essentially provide more pathways for students to show proficiency in the standards other than a high-stakes exam, and to move to one diploma, where currently we have three diplomas in New York State. So, the first transformation, adopt a portrait of a graduate. That was done at the November meeting of 2025, the Board of Regents', excuse me, the July meeting of the Board of Regents'. And you could see the logo of the Portrait of a Graduate here. Specifically, we're going to get into a little bit of detail on the six attributes of the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. But before we do that, just wanted to call attention to, again, we have a profile of a graduate that came from the Greece stakeholders as the development of our last strategic plan. And really, this started, these attributes started with interviews and focus groups with our students, and things that were important to them to get out of their educational experience, that were then taken to the larger Strategic Plan Advisory Committee back when we were developing Reach. And that's how we landed on the attributes of our profile, which are not identical to, but there are a lot of overlap and alignment with the Portrait of a Graduate attributes from New York State as well. So the theory behind the Portrait of a Graduate, adding that to the diploma, or excuse me, the graduation requirements, is that it moves our New York State graduation requirements from a focus solely on academic test scores with a framework for all the competencies that are expected of our graduates when they enter post-secondary life. So you'll see things there, like not only academically prepared, but things like innovation, global citizenship, communication, reflection, and future-focused. As I mentioned, these are aligned a lot with our current profile of a graduate in our strategic plan, where we have similar attributes in ours: thoughtful, self-aware, personally responsible, and then also our core values of excellence with equity, excuse me, resilience and respect. So moving on to the second pillar, this is where we're going to spend the majority of our time this evening, really redefining credits and assessment and the requirements that go along with those. We don't have a ton of information yet. More of what we have is kind of a description of the spirit of these requirements from the state, but we do have a little bit of detail. One of those things being, the very first thing that was approved by the state for, as an action item in the spring, was a major life event exemption for Regents' exam for students who are enrolled in and have passed the course of study, but had a significant life event that prevented them from, prevented or impeded them from successfully completing the Regents' exam. So we did have a few applications from families and from school counselors in the spring of this year. We had 10, the major life event exemptions that were approved. And we actually did have one in August. That is a typo. We had one in August. Things, examples of these major life events are students undergoing cancer treatment, a student who got in a serious accident, a dirt bike accident, a student who lost a family member. So we really tried to keep it to events that were very significant in nature, not that someone was sick and they couldn't make the exam. So as far as the Regents' exams go, I just want to make it really clear that the state has said, time and again publicly, that Regents' exams are not going away. In fact, they can, they cannot go away. It's a requirement for us under ESSA that we offer Regents' exams. We value Regents' exams. We think they're a quality measure of student proficiency in the learning standards, and they will be an option for our students moving forward. The spirit behind this decoupling the Regents' exams from graduation is that, is that there will be other alternative assessment pathways for them to complete that will show the same amount of rigor in proficiency in the standards, and also the Portrait of a Graduate attributes that I mentioned. And it really is up to us, at least I think it's going to be up to us, what, how, how to ensure the rigor of the standards are in these alternate assessments. So where we're starting, I'll get to the timeline a little bit later. But we are starting this work initially this spring with a brainstorm, kind of a brainstorming session with some of our teachers, because this is going to be the class of, the class that enters ninth grade in 2027 is going to be the first class that has this decoupled Regents' exam as part of their high school experience. So where we're starting is we're trying to think about, what's a process we can use with our staff to at least conceptualize and start to brainstorm what an alternate assessment might look like for the typical freshman in 2027, 28? So courses like algebra, living environment, earth science, courses that students will typically take in ninth grade. That's where we need to start our brainstorm as we await further guidance. So, not only assessments are being reimagined a little bit, but credits as well. So the very simple way to say, to sum up the, the credit requirement in New York Inspires is that they shouldn't be limited to seat time or hours anymore. So if you think about how you earn a credit typically in the current high school experience, or all of our high school experience, really, you go and typically you take a class. You sit in the class from September to June. There's assignments and expectations that go along with that. They get assessed, and you either pass or you don't pass that class. The spirit of this is to earn credit not only through that avenue, which will still be available, but also through things like work-based learning, internships, actual work experience could potentially count, and other experiences which are monitored and supervised in a community setting that could, again, show the same proficiency in the New York State learning standards that we currently do with our coursework. There's also new instructional requirements we need to offer and ensure that all of our students have. These are actually going to be starting in the fall of this year, and there's going, there's some conversation at BOSI's right now as to how the current learning standards capture some of this. And we're in the good fortune, or we're in the good position to have most of our students with exposure already in their high school program to these requirements, particularly with financial literacy education. So we offer courses in the high school program, including Strategies for Success, which all students are expected to take if they, if they can for graduation, although there are some students who aren't able to fit it into their schedule because they have multiple ensembles or otherwise. But the great majority of our students are enrolled in Strategies for Success, which does touch on financial literacy. We also have a course called Math and Financial Applications, Accounting, Personal Money Management. So we do have the great majority of our students receiving this instruction already. We just need to make sure that we can offer it to all of our students beginning next fall for grades nine through 12, and then also six through eight, and then the following year for, for K4. So a lot of work to be done there, but we're building the current state. We feel confident that we're in a good place to be able to continue our current program with some minor tweaks. What we're not so clear on yet is the climate education requirement, which will begin in the fall of 2027 for students in grades nine through 12, and students in grades six through eight, and then in 28, 29 for the students in K5. So what the work that's currently going on with that is, BOSI's for Science is currently building a crosswalk between the New York State learning standards and climate education. The thing I think that we're really waiting on is, we don't really know what the definition of climate education is yet, and we expect guidance on that to come somewhere down the line. So I don't have a ton to offer you on that. But as far as financial literacy goes, I feel like we're in a pretty good spot, and the instructional team agrees with that piece. So along those same lines, we, we need to offer students multiple pathways to graduation. We do have a lot of this already built into our program, which you saw through the course offering catalog. We do have pathways for our students and a lot of sequences, whether that be in responding to emergencies or fine arts. But this is, again, trying to kind of broaden the pathways that students have to go from ninth grade to earning the New York State diploma through things like internships, work-based learning, capstone projects, community service. All of this is really TBD. This is not something that we've gotten a ton of guidance on yet, just more, again, kind of the spirit of broadening those opportunities for, for students to, to progress towards graduation. One thing that had, wasn't explicitly called out as an expectation of the New York Inspires initiative, but we know that we are, that we need to roll into it, is how we work with, address, teach, responsible use of artificial intelligence. It's something that we've been working on as a district, and we're going to present to the board a little bit on that next month through our technology presentation. We have a group that's been working on that for the past couple of years and continues to do that, and some teachers using tools in their classroom already. But really, when we talk about kind of scaling that out, we need to broaden how we're doing our core instruction to incorporate AI. There's been a lot of news about, news and stories about students just basically replacing their thinking with, with AI, and we want to just do our best to avoid that and really teach students how to use the tool responsibly and teach them, kind of reform our teaching to incorporate that into our assignments, our assessments, and really guard against using it as a replacement and use it instead as a tool to supplement the learning instead of supplant it, and supplant the critical thinking. Really want to make sure that we are maintaining our academic integrity in the face of this challenge. The final pillar, or transformation of New York Inspires, is the move to one diploma. So currently, we have three diploma offerings in New York State. There's the Regents' diploma. We have a Regents' diploma with advanced designation. And then we have a local diploma, which there's a few different avenues for students to obtain the local diploma. This pillar really moves the, the New York State diploma to be one singular set of requirements. And then it's up to the district to add any appropriate seals or endorsements based on our instructional program. So kind of like a higher ed analogy to think about this is like, this is, this is the, the college degree, and then the seals or endorsements are things like honors or magna cum laude or the other kind of more rigorous, more rigorous pathways or coursework that students would take. But as far as the state goes, if you earn a diploma, you've shown proficiency in the New York State learning standards. You've shown proficiency in the Portrait of a Graduate attributes, and that's what's signified by the receiving the diploma. So timeline. We're still waiting on a lot of specifics, to be honest with you, but we have expectations for us laid out for the summer, or excuse me, the fall of 2027. So right now, we're in this installation phase, so we're expecting some prioritized learning standards to be released. My hope is that there's some alignment with some of our requirements when it comes to financial literacy, climate education, Portrait of a Graduate. Those all exist in our current learning standards in one way, shape, or form. I think it would be very helpful for us if the tools released from the state had some sort of alignment, and we're really advocating, I know the other ASIs in the county were advocating with our BOSI's liaison to push the state to try to help us out with that. And hopefully, that will be coming soon. In the fall, again, we need to attest to the fact that we have financial literacy instruction going on in the six, eight grade band and nine, 12. We plan to be in good shape to do that. And then a little further down the line in 2027, that's the first class that's going to have the decoupled assessment requirements, and full implementation is expected in the fall of 2029. So obviously, there are a lot of questions to be answered between now and then. We're doing some initial work. Like I said, this spring, we're planning on carving out some time with teachers to talk about, at least from a very high level so far, what could an alternate assessment look like for a freshman in the fall of 2027, actually would be taken in the spring of 2028? But what could that look like, and what will we have learned by then? Hopefully, quite a bit more. And then we really need to get an update on the Portrait of a Graduate from the state if our expectation is to start to implement that really anytime soon, because that seems to be a huge shift, not only with, kind of organizing it and rolling it out, but like with our instructional practices, if it's expected to be part of our core instructional program. So we're hoping for information on that. And we have a work group, Graduation Measures Committee, which Board Member Faustarano is on, has an update for you a little later on. We're current, we're representative group. We have administrators, operational staff, financial staff, instructional staff, teachers, union representation on that committee. And the idea is that that kind of core team will take the directives from the state, and then each work with their appropriate subcommittees to put together a plan for, for the work from their own unique perspective. So that is pretty much all the information that we have. Would love to hear your questions. You know, we're always trying to pass on information to, to BOSI's, and I'll do my best to answer from what we know so far.
Before we jump into questions, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be helpful if Anna Maria, you want to give your report now that maybe would answer some questions ahead of time, if you don't mind, or if you're prepared? I mean, if, is everybody okay with that? Just, I think it would make, maybe it'll alleviate some of the questions that we have.
Not at all. ASI's Zaffet did an amazing job explaining what we've worked on as committee members. I think it's worth noting, too, though, that NICEIT has put forth those first instructional requirements for us to create that Portrait of a Graduate that does align nicely with our profile of a graduate here in Greece, and that those first two topics of climate education and personal finance education are really going to be important as we get started. And as a district, we must assure New York State that our curriculum is meeting the standards set forth by the state. So that assurance is going to be very, very important, and that is incumbent upon us. Our work as a committee has been to make note of where and how our current district curriculum is, already our K-12 curriculum is meeting those expectations, and already we can see a high degree of alignment. So in a way, that's a good check for us to know that the work that we have been doing right along is basically hitting the benchmark that New York State is putting out now in the New York Inspire movement. While it's been clearly stated that the Regents' exams will be available to students, the state is giving local control to the districts to offer expanded opportunities to demonstrate their learning. And I, I would agree with the statement that with AI in our midst is, you know, is part of the instructional landscape that we have performance-based assessments and also authentic assessments to kind of mitigate that you kids will use the AI as a tool, not so much as relying only on AI to generate, you know, and to demonstrate their learning. The committee will also begin to brainstorm with input from staff, how the shift in assessment might possibly be reflected in classrooms. That's another big move. And as we await additional guidance, our committee will continue to strategize how we will meet these rollout timelines with the idea that, you know, it's hurry up and wait. So we're ready, but we need to have a little more guidance from that. There was a question from a board member on civics, and I don't know, Tracy, if you still have that. And I, I believe that with most of this initiative, a lot of the things that our students are going to be asked to do, we will be able to find links from other curriculum. For example, civics would be addressed by our social studies curriculum very highly. So I don't think we're in a, in a bad way that way. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to have those crosswalk opportunities, and that the seal of civic readiness is also available to be added to the diploma. So, Mr. Zaffet, you did a great job, Dr. Zaffet. I'm sorry if that was redundant, but I enjoyed being able to. I'm sorry if that was redundant, but I enjoyed being on the X committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Falciano. All right, rolling into questions, Ms. Farmer.
On page 11.
Mike, and you might not, it might not be, but I'm wondering about lab hours and how those credit, will those credit requirements change as well in terms of lab hours for science classes, or we don't know yet?
I don't have a concrete answer for you. My guess would be that if it's instruction or hands-on experience in the content area, that that would count towards a credit.
Sure. So you were saying earlier that they could get the requirements other places than the classroom?
Yep.
This too, you think, could work in that way? Because they were always so strict on making sure those lab hours were there. So we're kind of, you know what I'm talking about? So, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a great question. Yeah, but I do, I definitely think that lab hours would count towards, would continue to count towards the credit. As far as like being like a really strict adherence, I'm not sure if there would be.
Yes, it's my question.
It would probably be up to us. I think a lot of this and a lot of the answer to probably some of your questions is it's really going to be up to us to determine what we want to include as these kind of alternate measures for proficiency. And it's also going to be up to us to determine and ensure that they adhere to the rigor of the standards. So like, so rubrics and things of that nature, we're going to need to make sure that we're, we have rubrics and we're calibrated in on anything that's not, that's outside of what we currently do.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Like.
I, I hate to sound negative, but I, I have some concerns as you probably wouldn't be too surprised about.
It is.
They, they mention academic, but then there's so many other attributes and they never really.
Mary, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you just move your microphone closer down at the center? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sure. Is that better?
Thank you.
They never really define the academic. And it seems like on page 10, it says the Regents exams are good, are valid assessments, but we're not going to use them. And there are so many pathways that don't ever involve the actual knowledge that a student has and the ability to use that. And I'm thinking about the senior portfolios. And I've only done that for two years, but the, the range was enormous. And I can see the range here. Our top students will thrive. They will go above and beyond. But the kids struggling, those low reading, the kids who are not reading at level, they're not doing math at level. And so how can they use critical thinking skills without knowledge bases? You know, critical thinking is different in a science class than it is in a social studies class. So they don't exist in the abstract. They're, they're tied to that knowledge. And I just worry about the kids that are not, you know, they're kind of below the, the median and what happens to them.
Yeah, I got a couple of thoughts that I could offer. I think, I think first it's important to, to note that the portrait of a graduate is one of four pillars for this and that the state learning standards are, they're still the same learning standards.
Okay.
So we're still, students are still going to need to show the same proficiency in the learning standards that they're currently showing. The, the portrait attributes are kind of like an add-on, so we need to figure out that whole piece. But the standards aren't going away, at least we haven't heard that.
Those might be really good to share with us. I, I might feel a lot better about it, you know, with those standards.
The learning standards?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes. And the other thing, I think that we talk about a global citizen. I'd love to have them be a United States citizen and know what our constitution is about and the rights that they have because they live here. So I don't want to lose that with this global mindset.
Yeah, I would just kind of echo what I said earlier, because like those expectations, they're within, they're already embedded in the content of our courses and, you know, seventh, eighth grade social studies, US history, civics, and our participation in government, CIA, excuse me. So I don't expect those learning standards to change. So, but you'll be the first to know if they do.
Thanks.
Mr. Bonagaro.
Dr. Zaffitz, you answered a bunch of my questions with the comment, we don't have enough information on it yet. I, I really appreciate that you're bringing this to us now and hope, you said you're going to be bringing more to us.
Yep.
That, that is very welcome and I look forward to hearing that as, as more unfolds. But I do have a question that maybe you can address now, and it kind of relates to Mary's question. To, to the extent that we're using other non-traditional means of assessing students. We have, if they're in an internship or something, how do we, how do we control that kind of environment? Or do we, so that we're confident that students who go into that kind of a learning environment are actually getting the breadth and depth of knowledge that would reflect if, you know, they were to take a standardized test or something like, and apparently they won't be taking a standardized test. So how do we really know that they're emerging with the needed proficiency?
Yeah. Well, again, I think it's important to keep coming back to the fact that they can still take standardized tests. The Regents will be there as an option for, for students to take. So they will be there as an option. As far as other options and experiences, alternate assessments, we, they, there's the same learning standards that we need to ensure that students are showing proficiency in. So if there's an internship or a hands-on or a work-based experience, for example, we need to, through our teams, through our instructional teams, kind of vet that assessment to ensure that whatever product that the student is producing, whatever process they're going through and the way that that's documented is meeting the same standards as the Regents exam or the, the existing assessment.
In, in that kind of a situation, do we work with, if it's a company, for example, to make sure that they're providing that, that kind of knowledge? Or do we backfill?
Yeah. Yeah, we would, we would work with partners to ensure that the rigor is there.
Thank you.
Questions, Bailey.
I just had a question about kind of what you were saying, that the music students or people who have more of a loaded schedule don't always get to take like strategies for success. Is that kind of going to be a part of this planning committee is making that accessible to all students?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a big, that's kind of like probably our most near-term, immediate challenge. Because, especially because we have the financial literacy component next year. So we need to make sure that if next year's seniors haven't gotten that as part of their nine, 12 experience yet, we need to make sure we provide it for them somehow. So I don't know what that's going to look like yet, whether it's like an independent study or, or something of that nature. But just kind of back to what we were just saying, we need to make sure whatever we come out with is, has the same rigor of the standards and that every student has access to it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Mr. Butler.
Bailey inspired me with a comment. So my 26-year-old son, who was in a lot of different ensembles and stuff in his Greece education experience, said to me the other night, he's now thinking about buying a house. And he is, said to me, boy, I should have taken, I wish I had been required to take a class like this when I was in high school. My, I, my guess is that because he was in band and chorus and all those things, he didn't, didn't end up taking it. So I think not only will it help meet the standard that we're required to meet it, it'll, I think, have some positive impact on, on more students.
Yeah, that's certainly the intent.
Mr. Bonagaro.
Quick one. Are the, are the classes like the financial literacy and whatever the climate education turns out to be, are those going to be required classes or, or electives?
So it's kind of to broaden that a little bit. We need to ensure that we are offering all of our students in six, eight and in nine, 12 instruction in financial literacy and eventually climate education. So it can look a number of different ways. It could be a standalone class. It can also be like piecemeal throughout the standards of like, maybe you hit these components of credit and risk management in ninth grade in whatever class, and then you don't get to mortgages and interest until 11th. But we just need to figure out how we get there and ensure that we have everything addressed.
So ultimately they'll be embedded in required classes?
Or it could be a standalone class. Like I don't, I don't want to say definitely one way or another, but we just have, we have different ways to get there. Our job is to just ensure that we get there.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a bunch. I usually don't have a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions and a lot of comments. So we'll start on page 10. Make it easy, and I'll try to go in order. My first thing before you get to page 10 is the standards are subjective, though, in reality. So everybody's interpretation of the standards across Greece, across the county, across the state can be a little bit different, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that was my one comment. But getting to page 10, I don't know if you want to flip their mic or if you're good?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Is there, with the decoupling of the Regents, and you mentioned ESSA, is there a percentage of students that are going to be required to take? I mean, nobody's going to be required to take a Regents exams, but S is the standard. How, if we don't have enough students taking a Regents exam, what's that going to look like?
I have no answer for that. Haven't heard of any.
I mean, there's going to be a lot of questions. I mean, you might not have an answer to, but I think as this moves forward, there's a lot of things that we really got to look at. Or, I mean, I think this was, I'll leave that. So the credit requirements, skipping to page 11. Credit, credit requirements will not be limited to seat time hours. But all of our state aid is based on students being in attendance. We've been focused on attendance. We've been pushing attendance for 18 years I've been on the Board of Education. But now attendance really might not matter as much anymore. It seems like we're trying to modify and help our students that are chronically absent achieve the ability to graduate. But yeah, is that going to affect our aid because Sean and Jordan weren't in school every day? But yeah, we're going to give them, seat time and hours aren't really required. If I do the work at home or do it on my own schedule or don't do that work, there's no, could there be a reduction in aid based on that, based on numbers?
I don't have a concrete answer for you. I, I can say that at least, at least what we've heard through the information from the state is that the experiences, like the, the time that you're in class would be replaced with the time at a supervised community location. So whether it's a, whatever, an internship or somewhere in the community. As far as the specifics about how that impacts in-person attendance or whether it's like one for one, hour to hour, I don't have that for you.
Okay.
But that's what's been presented so far.
I mean, page 12, I mean, the whole climate education thing is very, I guess, disconcerting to a certain degree because obviously climate is very political. It's very divisive across depending on your position on, you know, whether it's all electric, fossil fuels, whatever that may look like. So I have some concerns. Are we pushing with climate education a narrative to our students based on whoever's running the show in Albany? Whether it's, you know, somebody that's pro-climate or pro-fossil fuel, whatever that looks like. I mean, I do have a little bit of concern that like, is climate education going to change every three years or four years, depending on who's sitting in the governor's mansion?
Yeah, I think that's a real valid concern.
Okay.
And that was the first thing that I thought of too, when I saw the word climate, I was like, great, here we, you know.
Yeah.
We got to do it responsibly, right? So I think our job is to, when we talk about what kind of skills we want to build in our students in our, take the New York State Portrait of a Graduate out of it.
Yep.
Think about ours when it comes to critical thinking, analysis, things like that. Regardless of, you know, who's, regardless of who's putting it forward, we should, we need to give our students a broad perspective and teach them to think about the issues and research the issues on their own and come to a conclusion.
And I know, skipping to page 13 now. I have, I mean, reservations. I mean, everything in education has become about numbers. What students score in the fourth grade ELA, what they score in the eighth grade, it's all about numbers. Everybody, every district across the state is compared by numbers, graduation rates, you know, percent passing Regents exams. Everybody looks at that. That's all the information the community gets. And the problem I have with how are we going to determine mastery? And in one school district, I mean, you know, I'll use an Eastside school district that has like a 99% graduation rate. You know, their graduation rate is probably going to be 99 or 100. I have concerns that some school districts are going to see a big jump in graduation rates because of mastery and who defines mastery? And what's mastery look like in the Greece Central School District versus the Batavia School District versus RCSD? It could be all over the place.
Yep.
And I mean, that's, I mean, I think it's just become a very, and I know it's not you, this is a state thing.
Yeah.
But to me, it's a very slippery slope we're engaging on that the New York State High School diploma isn't going to have the value that it had and has now. And it's going to be, you know, basically a watered-down version because we're trying to increase graduation rates through a false narrative.
Yeah.
Is ultimately what I think it's going to look like. And that's my reservation with a lot of this and reading. And it really, like I read through it three times because I'm like, there's a lot that concerns me. I mean, I won't be here, but for this community and for this board who's going to be here, and you guys are all going to be here, I think there's a lot of things that are a little bit scary looking at how this is going to play out and what it's going to lead to from a school district standpoint and public education as a whole in this state. Moving on to page 15, I mean, I think Anna Maria might have hit on this and maybe you can answer it a little bit. Because I, I mean, I'm concerned about like with AI, is it going to be more, are we looking at like more testing in the classroom? More like counting, like right now, we don't really count participation. Participation is kind of a fuzzy thing. In some classes it's counted, in some classes it's not, you know. But is that going to become part of the, to a grad measure is going to be because of the concerns with AI that you're really not going to be able to do anything. I mean, homework's going to be a thing of the past because of AI. So everything is like, what skills do you have? Whether it's a proficiency, a hands-on skill, or whether it's a written skill that you're going to have to demonstrate in some type of an assessment. Do you see it leading to more like in-person type assessments? Or like colleges do where you're on a computer and like they're watching your eyes and you have a time limit and all of that?
Yeah.
Do you see where this is, I mean, do you see, think that, is this where this is going to go?
I do to a degree. I think the second part with like watching the computer, hopefully we don't get near that. But I do think we got to really take a look at how we assess and what we assess. And then also just like the learning experiences that we're expecting and giving students to prevent against, like you said, kind of just going home and punching your homework into a, a system and having to give you your, your essay.
Yeah.
Right? So how can we use it? How can we teach students to use it to augment or enhance or like deepen your product rather than just replace it? So yeah, I do see instruction changing.
And then my final question, thank you for taking the time and I appreciate your answers. On page 17, where you talk about the seals and endorsements, is there like a state list of what seals and endorsements are going to be? Or is it going to be determined like in our case, and I'll use, I don't even know if it'd be a seal or an endorsement, like RTE for example?
Yeah.
Like we have RTE, nobody else does. We could have an RTE assessment or a seal or endorsement on a diploma. And some other school district may have a program we don't have, they would have a seal or an endorsement. Is that correct?
That's the way that I've understood it so far.
Okay.
This, I feel like this is, this one, I don't, there hasn't been a ton on this one yet. But the way that it's been presented is like, they're basically saying, this is our diploma and you can add seals and endorsements based on your district context, whatever you do.
Gotcha.
So if RTE is what you want to put, add one for, you can add one.
So I mean, I, I guess my question is, is there going to, and as a follow-up, and I don't know if the state's done this or not, but is there a, from like the Regents perspective, you, you know, there was a Regents diploma, Regents with distinction, et cetera. Is there, is there going to be like a seal or endorsement that I, I took all Regents? You know, you know, our good kids, you know, they're going to, you know, still take the Regents exams and get those or take APs. Is that going to be a seal or endorsement? Or is that basically going to go away? Or is that going to be a district option to your understanding?
I wouldn't anticipate that coming from the state.
Okay.
I would, I would, I mean, you can, I can speculate that if we wanted to do something like that and say that this is our, it's a Regents endorsement.
Okay.
We could do that locally, local decision. But as far as the state goes, I don't anticipate anything besides their one diploma. anticipate anything besides their one diploma, based on what we've learned so far.
A, a, and I guess, just my final comment or question on this, and maybe this would reflect more on, to one of our former principals at the secondary level, or Dr. Baker, with her background. Every district's diploma is going to be a little bit different, then. So how are you really going to have a handle, I mean, I guess, from like, the, you know, the workforce, college, whatever it's going to be, how are you going to be able to say, well, Sean got a diploma from Greece Olympia or Greece Central, and Jeremy got one from West Oronde Quay. The diplomas are going to look different. They're still going to say New York State diploma, but he's going to, he may have 100 different seals and endorsements, I may have 100 different seals and endorsements. How is, how are colleges, et cetera, going to say, well, Jeremy's clearly a better student than Sean was, so we're going to accept Jeremy into an Ivy League school, and, you know, Sean's going to be going to a different institution?
Yeah. I think, I think, so, I think the seals and endorsements, that's a, a huge problem. I think when it comes to the diploma, the spirit of that is to, to mitigate against having a ton of diversity amongst the districts, so like, the basic diploma, the New York State diploma, but then when you start adding seals, that's where I can, I can totally see your point, that will be something we'll have to contend with, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Nice job.
Can I, one second? Just one quick.
Sure.
I just, um, I don't know if I have a point here, um, but it's on my mind. We, when you look at what's going to take place over the next three years, we did it in 2027.
Yep.
Two years, um, it's reshaping our secondary schools. So, you know, Dr. Zafik's talked a lot about the collaboration, just to determine pathways and assessments, um, that's just one piece of this puzzle here, because we're talking about a different way of doing business in our high schools, um, that has been in place forever. Um, and I'm just saying that because, um, it's going to take incredible collaboration, patience, um, to work through a process that's not only deciding on assessments, but just what our teachers are expected to do in their classrooms. When you think about a typical class, you know, you're sitting, your teacher, you have 15, 20 kids in front of you, you know they're all taking that same assessment. Now you could be sitting in a class where you have six taking a Regents, one taking a pathway here, one taking a pathway here, um, so I think, just thinking, it's really important for us to, to stay together, because, again, this isn't Greece choosing to do this, right? This is New York State that has chose to do it, and we could either, you know, look at it, it's just the lens you look at this, you know, if we have the opportunity to create some stuff that could, really could open doors for some students, but also ensuring that they're going to walk out of our doors with understanding the standards that are expected there. So, it's, it's scary a little bit, because we have, it's great opportunity, but it's all on our shoulders to determine that. Um, so, so that, it's just a lot of work and time, and we asked Dr. Zafik to do this today, knowing we don't have a lot of answers, so we could have waited, but we felt that it was important for you just to get this upfront and hear it, because it's not going to go away, and we're going to be continually bringing this back, but we wanted to be transparent, let you all see, as much as we know, ask questions, be okay saying, I don't know, but also wanting you to know that there's some work ahead of us, um, coming forward. But I, I think the work that we're doing, you mentioned, you heard about PLCs, at the end of the day, the PLCs are about standards, and at the heart of all of this is standards. So, it makes me feel good that we're at least already in that process, but that's just the tip of the iceberg of what's coming, but I think we're doing a lot of good work to set us up, but there's a lot more work to come, so, I appreciate you coming up, Mike, and doing that.
Thank you, Superintendent Smoline. All right, moving on to 4.02, Special Education Annual Report, Superintendent Smoline.
All right, I will ask Executive Director Stacy Brindisi and Director Melanie Stevenson to come up.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Melanie and I are both grateful for the opportunity to share an overview of special ed programming in our district with you this evening. Each of you recently received a comprehensive report with an extensive amount of data included, so if there happen to be any questions regarding any of the information included within that report, but not reported tonight in our presentation, feel free to reach out to either one of us, and we're happy to review that with you. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and get started. The first few slides you're going to see, um, really just serve to outline the organizational structure within the PPS department. Um, each year, all of my team members attend this meeting, and with each year, thanks to the support of the board and the superintendent, my team continues to expand and grow, um, and really aligned with the needs of, of our students in our district, so, um, we're appreciative that, that our team is able to do that. Um, at this point, we have the two of us, there are 10 assistant directors, a preschool chairperson, many TOSSAs, seven clerical support, and four of our assistant directors are now housed in secondary schools. So we've made a lot of growth as far as expanding our team, um, and really focusing in as few buildings as possible to be able to support. Okay, so, the first slide that I am going to share some information on, really outlines our in-district programming, and it really starts from the top-left, least restrictive, moving to the most restrictive residential placement. Um, we have a few things that set us apart from other districts, prime, or really primarily the complexity of our special programming, so other districts do not have the specialized programming that we have. Other districts don't have the number of special education classrooms that we have. We operate about 84 classrooms right now that are self-contained classrooms, K-12. Um, other districts also don't have, um, integrated co-teach broadly, broadly, across all of our buildings, so there's just a couple of things that kind of set us apart from, from the rest. One of the nice things about our continuum is it provides for the opportunity for the vast majority of our students who require support and services to stay within their homeschool, without having to change to a different school, or, uh, leave the district. Okay, so this next slide really outlines all of the special education service providers supporting our programs. I've said this in previous years, but it really can't be overstated enough, that Greece is unlike any other area district, and that all of these, um, providers are employees of the district, with the exception of one who's a, a BOSI's employee. Um, and this chart represents over 400 certified staff in our district, um, and that doesn't include our over 100 TAs, monitors, and support staff that are also, uh, supporting us. If you kind of just move through the chart, we have 186 teachers, 38 speech paths, so you can see we really add up, um, as we look at all the staff collectively supporting our kids. Okay, so this chart, we kind of call this the anchor chart in our team, to kind of just really look at the enrollment distribution across our district, so we have an idea of who we're responsible for providing support for. So I'm just going to walk you through this chart to orient you a little bit. Um, our in-district students, there's 1,509 in-district students, they're in attendance on our 18 school campuses. There are 99 out-of-district place students placed by the Greece Central School District, CSE, so they're recommended by our district for an out-of-district placement, an alternative placement to better meet their needs. We pay for that, and we, uh, support and provide oversight for that programming. Emily Lathers is responsible for that caseload. The 83 students we have underneath are parentally placed within district boundaries, those are district residents, so those come in three different categories. Those 83 students are either resident students who attend a private school in Greece, so they might go to Greece Christian, or to St. Lawrence. They're homeschool students, it's considered a private school in New York State, so they're also counted in there. And then, in addition, are all of our charter school students. So although we support students in private schools within district, we have to support our charter school students wherever they go. So Jennifer Dixon, a new member to our, uh, department, um, she supports all of those schools, and they're quickly growing, um, and it just really extends the caseload, because one student might be in a new charter school, and then we have to provide for services, and make sure we're providing those, those supports for our kids. Um, and lastly, those 25 kids at the bottom, those are non-district residents. We have a few at, um, St. Lawrence and Greece Christian, but they're primarily, um, from , uh, different districts in attendance in Drakatoura, which is our Jewish school, um, Stoner, I think?
Main Lane.
Main Lane. I can tell I'm not a Greece girl. Sorry. Okay, so percentage of students with disabilities, this really, this slide is going to highlight what we know to be true, right? That, that numbers are increasing, and every year, our percentage increases. So in your report, I highlighted that we're at the point now with that, that entire number, the 1,700-plus students, we're at 17.5%, if we look at the percentage of classified students with all, that's the second time, when we look at the percentage of, of, um, students who we provide oversight for. Within our schools is that 1,509 number, which is about 15%, so it's a little bit lower within our schools we classify. Okay, so this, uh, chart really kind of just shares the distribution of classifications, so, and it's consistent in previous years, so there's 13 classifications that Part 200 allows us to designate for each student who's eligible for special ed services, and year after year, the four most prevalent are what you see up there, autism, learning disability, other health impairment, or speech and language impairment. Um, you know, autism, I think, is pretty obvious, we all know that numbers in our community are significantly increasing. Um, under an other health impairment, um, we have ADHD and anxiety that fit under that, which is also prevalent amongst a lot of our students that fit into that category. Um, and of course, learning disability, that's what a lot of our students are designated as, as we, um, implement some of our problem-solving structures to provide tiered support for them. Okay, and this is enrollment in district programs by service area, so you will see what I commented on before, which is that integrated co-teaching is our primary service model. 691 students are enrolled, uh, K-12, in that service. Something to note, although every service, the State Ed Department says, even if you don't have a 12 to 1 to 3 to 1, in Greece, you have to find one, and that's where other districts access contracted agencies, private schools. What's really important to, to note is that integrated co-teaching is not required by any school district to access, so it's a choice that Greece makes. Um, you, we could have a student transfer from our district to, say, Churchville-Chile, and they're not required to find that comparable service of ICT, because it's really a, a great, above-and-beyond service, um, that is not required, it's the only on the continuum that's not required, and most districts do not have, um, the number of sections we do. Um, and just for a reference about that service, that service, um, is in 14 of 18 campuses, um, the campuses it's not at are really due to space constraints. Um, it's two teachers, a gen ed teacher, a special ed teacher, and a general ed class with a maximum of 12 students. So that's where we find most of our students enrolled in the district. And, so this is a distribution, so obviously, we always try to equitably distribute across all of our buildings, um, and you'll see that there are four that are lower than, than the others, um, and those are all due to, to space constraints in, in those buildings specifically. Um, so Brookside, Patty Hill, Heimbruck, is that it? One more? Yeah, those are the ones that, um, really don't have a significant amount of specialized programming, they don't have room, they're often in overflow for even their resident students for gen ed, so those are, um, some of the considerations that we made when we made recommendations as a department for the Level Up Capital Improvement projects, and talking about how we could better support our programs and provide spaces across all of our buildings, so that it's not just, um, inequitably distributed across some schools. Secondary is much more equitably distributed, you'll see, um, in, uh, looking, that roughly everybody's sort of in, in the same area. Uh, to note, Athena Middle School is, it's increased, and it's increased because we have a significant number of students that are entering from Craig Hill, from, um, uh, Brookside and Longridge, who are entering, and they haven't had that, um, autism programming at Athena Middle School, so it's really new, and we're building that, um, so that's where you'll see that number. Um, the Arcadia Middle School campus has a specialized program of our behavior programming, and the rest of the campuses have what most of our campuses offer, which is ICT and 1211s. And before we turn it over to Melanie, this is just a, a update on where we are with the, um, New York State Performance Plan. Spoiler alert, that we're cited again this year, so we are working on it, we're working on it, and we've made a lot of progress. So for Indicator 4, um, we continue to be cited, that's a citation for disproportionate representation of students with disabilities, and Black students with disabilities suspended from school. And we continue to be cited, we're at risk for Hispanic students, um, and we've made a lot of progress, I think, as far as some alternatives that we're trying to create, some supports in being proactive in some of our approaches and interventions, sending expert staff to team meetings to problem solve, we're trying to really get ahead of it, so that we can be proactive versus responsive. Um, and, we're not cited for Indicator 12, that's just what Greece, uh, is required to report on this year, so Indicator 12, um, requires us to report on the seamless, timely transition of kids from early intervention to preschool. So currently, so, early intervention is birth to two-years-old, and then Sue Allen supports preschool, three to five, and then we have five up for, for school age. So having that transition from birth to two to CPSC is really supposed to be very timely, prior to a student's third birthday, and it's really about making sure that we have supports in place. Um, so last year, there were 61 students that transitioned from EI to CPSC. This year, I think Sue Allen's others are already 41, maybe so far this year, um, so a lot of students, and that really is, um, not surprising either, knowing that our preschool numbers continue to, to go up, um, year after year. Just going to turn it over to Melanie to continue.
All right, I'm going to be reviewing some of our, uh, PPS department priority areas. Um, as always, we place a high priority on collaboration, communication, clarity, um, and building staff capacity around our special education procedures. We do have our handbook, uh, linked in to this presentation, which really has all of our, um, information on policies, procedures, um, so that we can be as consistent as possible, and as clear as possible with our staff. It's really grown tremendously over the course of many years, um, and is certainly a point of pride for our department. Um, our focus on MTSS and RTI processes are really at the forefront of our work, because we rely on those pre-referral interventions being in place prior to determining if a student is eligible under CSE. We're focusing on building level problem-solving process at five, um, principal and PPS collaborative meetings this year, which I'll talk about a little bit more. Um, and we, as far as support staff recruitment, we are constantly recruiting, interviewing, and hiring for all of our support staff vacancies, and we also continue to utilize an outside staffing agency to support with those positions as well. Um, we're really excited to be working with the Human Resources Department to develop an ongoing onboarding process for our support staff, um, that are hired over the course of the school year, so that they, um, feel ready, able to perform their duties, and that they have continued support over the course of time. Other priority areas for our department include the monitoring of our classification rate and program enrollment, um, it keeps growing. Um, linked, again, on this, uh, page, is a chart that shows where all of our different programs are located across the district, and again, that has grown, uh, every year. Um, Stacy shared some of the reasons for our classification rate, and I'll add, one that we really want to be focusing on is our declassification rate. We're not declassifying students at a high rate. Um, currently, we've had five declassifications so far this year, it's certainly not in line with the amount of students that are being classified. Um, with regard to social-emotional learning, we continue to be really proud of the resources that we're able to provide to buildings and to students, um, with regard to supporting, uh, their social-emotional learning, as, as well as behaviors. Um, those include, um, FBA and BIP facilitation, district behavior consultation, and a variety of mental health staff that are part of our programming, and we really appreciate the support, um, of, from you all, in terms of making sure, um, that we do have that, uh, mental health staff, um, available to support our programs. Uh, on this slide, um, this is the best slide out of the whole presentation, here are some of our students in action, having fun, um, from extended school year, uh, this past summer. Um, linked on this slide is a document that we've shared before, um, that compares our special ed continuum here in Greece with the New York State, uh, Education Department continuum. Our special class ratios here in Greece and student profiles are very similar, um, to the NICE ed continuum, and we've used this document, um, with our GTA Special Education Committee in previous years, to help build their capacity and understanding our continuum of service in Greece, and we will be revisiting, uh, it this year in consideration of staff turnover, um, as well as the changing needs of our students. That's definitely a, a constant conversation. Uh, literacy development continues to be a huge focus for the district and our department. Um, special class teachers who are implementing ARC Core will be provided some professional learning this year, specifically focusing on the differentiation and scaffolding, um, that's needed when you're teaching multiple grade levels, it certainly presents, um, some challenges, as you can imagine. Uh, additionally, our PPS administrators participated in a session with an ARC coach, um, to give us a high-level overview of ARC Core, so to build our capacity to support our teachers better, um, with their implementation. We continue to remain committed to training our special class consultant teacher and resource teachers in Orton-Gillingham, which resource teachers in Orton-Gillingham, which is that direct, explicit, multi-sensory diagnostic and prescriptive way to teach literacy when reading, writing, and spelling does not come easily. It's an approach that is typically prescribed for students with dyslexia. Our special education TOSAs and Stacy have been leading the implementation and review of the New York State Alternate Assessment ELA curriculum, which includes the implementation of Readopia to ensure that our students have access to high-quality literacy instruction that's based on the science of reading and aligned to concepts from the book Comprehensive Literacy for All, because we really believe that all students should have access to that high-quality literacy instruction, including our students that take the New York State Alternate Assessment. As you know from learning about ARC, elements of explicit direct instruction are embedded not only into ARC but also into Orton-Gillingham, into Readopia, and into the specially designed instruction that is part of our special education programming across the district. So lesson design components like identifying a learning target, activating prior knowledge, as well as guided and independent practice are incorporated, along with lesson delivery strategies like checks for understanding, modeling, and demonstration, which are all components of effective instruction, which I know you've been doing a lot of learning and studying about. I touched on our CSC processes and procedures previously, and it's really, obviously, a never-ending focus for our department to ensure that we're staying compliant with the New York State regulations. As you know, goal three of the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan Centers on Behavior Management, we have a variety of lead measures that we're focusing on this year with our department. One of those is targeting building level problem solving processes. And again, we're devoting five of our principal and PPS collaborative meetings to providing professional learning to building teams in order to strengthen their processes. So we've expanded not just for principals to attend, they've also been bringing folks that are part of their multidisciplinary team that engages in their building level problem solving process. There are also additional requirements for attendance at problem solving meetings as well, and the interview for reviewing students who have been removed. We're making sure that we are talking about students when they get to floor removals so that we can obviously try to be preventative and proactive and, you know, so that the removals don't continue. Therapeutic crisis intervention is also one of our lead measures this year. We are using all four district-wide department meetings to focus on the four questions of TCI. And those are, what am I feeling now? What does a student feel, need, expect, or want? How is the environment affecting the situation? And how do I best respond? So we're taking each of those meetings to focus on one of those questions. We also continue to focus on accurate documentation around student removals as well as holding the required set of meetings during the mandated timeframe, which we've talked to you about with regard to the Compliance Assurance Plan. One goal that we don't want to lose sight of is increasing the integration opportunities for students in our K-five special classes. And those conversations continue to happen at building level problem solving meetings so the individual plans for integration can be developed for students. So as you can see, a lot of important work happening across the district and in particular in the PPS department this year. And I think that's it. So time for questions.
Mr. Maloney.
On page ten. As soon as I find it, thank you.
Presentation or the slideshow, Mr. Maloney?
On page ten, the twelve one to one and the twelve three to one seem to go down in twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there a reason why that number went down?
Yeah, I saw that too. There really isn't. I think it's just honestly an anomaly. We frequently are moving kids from integrated placements to self-contained classes as appropriate. It's tough because we have kids, I think we had, the numbers I wrote down were like three hundred and twenty-eight kids, three hundred and eleven kids transferring in, a hundred and fifty-three out for a net add of one fifty-eight, right? And then we have parent referrals, student referrals, school referrals. So it really just is dependent on student need and how it kind of distributes. The numbers are there, they just are sort of in different programs. Twelve to one to three to one's a very specialized program. You'll see that we don't have very many students enrolled in that because we don't have a lot of those classrooms. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Mr. Butler. So looking at page eight in the presentation deck, just the percentage, you know, the going from fourteen and a half percent up a full percentage point two years later. When you play that trend line out five years from now, I don't, I'm not sure what reason there is to believe it's not going to continue in the same direction that it's going. I'm curious what we are doing or need to be doing in order to be prepared for that today.
Yeah, so one of the things that we, you're right. So what we're hoping to do is really building the skill set of our problem solving teams in PLCs so that they can rely on evidence-based interventions, collecting data, having a routine of sort of reviewing kids, and having that happen throughout buildings prior to special ed. I don't probably see that the classification rate's going to continue to decrease that much. And the reason for that, especially in Greece, and maybe not in any other district but in Greece, is we're here to help. We have a lot of support to help. We have a lot of internal supports to help. So oftentimes, we just try to roll up our sleeves and figure it out as a team. What we need moving forward is space. So we are going to have a bubble coming in that I'm going to share with the superintendent's cabinet after the holiday break. We're going to review some numbers. And I'm concerned for the first time, I'm really concerned that we don't have room for our kids. And it's not even just room for our kids, it's that no one else has room for our kids either. So that's really what I'm most worried about. The state will bark at us about, you know, classification rate of twelve and a half percent. We don't really care about that. We just want a place for our kids and to be able to make progress. So I don't see it going down.
Space is a big, is what you're saying, we need to be thinking more about.
We have specialized staff. We have the manpower to be able to absorb a lot of students. We just don't have the manpower to add new sections and classes, and we don't have the room to be able to do it. We get staff, unlike other districts who go without and have vacancies, we make it work here, and that's a testament to the cabinet and human resources and everyone in this district. So if we have a space to go to, we can fill it, and we're confident. And that hasn't been the messaging from BOCs. They haven't been confident or provided us with staff. We're more concerned about space and frankly, taking on all of the space that BOCs should be providing us a little support with to lighten the load a little bit.
Ms. Lake.
I was kind of horrified that kids before their third birthday were already identified as, you know, needing special services. Do they get placements in our preschool even if we don't have enough room to take all the applications?
Yeah, so the placements that have wait lists are not special ed placements. They're locations for some of our special ed kids to be in attendance at. So the real issue is, and what Sue Allen manages, and, you know, three hundred plus evals and meetings a year and trying to make recommendations for kids, is that the preschool special education programs are also lacking similar to the school age ones. So Sue Allen works diligently, and you'll hear that from parents, that she's getting blood from a stone trying to figure it out. So if I don't have a special class, integrated class, I'm going to try and get into the preschool program with one of our speech providers and have someone come and provide support and get some special ed teacher trying to piece it together. But that is not going to provide for the early intervention we need for our kids to make the growth that they need to make for them to be successful. So we have kids age three to five who Sue Allen has recommended for services and have received none of them for the whole time they've been on the waitlist. So we've had to really kind of back it up and say, our systems can't fail our kids when the outside systems did. So typically, kids would come in, and we would have a series of interventions and supports. And now we say, if you're a preschool student in Greece and you didn't get services, then you're coming into Greece, and we're figuring out how to get those services to you you were owed them beforehand. And that impacts staffing too.
Good for you. Does this, the kids who do get the services, are they able to kind of catch up with their classmates by kindergarten and come in sort of without the problems that they had two years before?
Yeah, I mean, ideally. So it's really, it's just, we have a really broad range of students who are classified. So to be classified as a preschooler with a disability, it's very easy. It's very straightforward. So school age, there's a lot of subjectivity, data review, looking at a lot of sort of different components. With a preschool evaluation, you have to either score a twenty-five percent delay in two areas or a thirty-three percent delay in one area that's been evaluated, and you automatically get services. So it's a really more clean-cut, concrete sort of system. It's just failing us and that our kids don't have the services that they need. So now they're coming into school age, and every kid is exited. So we're not just declassing kids. Every kid, when they turn five, is exited so they can enter K. And our programs can't support the shortcomings from before. So then we're sort of starting in this cycle again. And I forgot to mention in the presentation, but the exiting twelfth graders and the entering K are not even close, and that's what's causing the squeeze for us, right? Is the number of kids coming in are not equaling the number of kids exiting, and they're coming more significantly. So, you know, our special class are, you know, our kids are coming in special class, fifty, sixty, entering in the fall who require a special class. At least we have them, but we've used them. So if you look at our profile, our distribution of classification, you'll see Longridge is like, our six one ones, you'll see are almost filled because we take every spot up. We would probably have more kids if we had more room and more spots, but we are at that point where it's just, it's too tough for us to find locations.
Well, bless you all.
We're trying.
Ms. Seaman.
Hi, I just wanted to tell you that two of my schools are elementary, that I'm the liaison, and there is not a nook, that is not, there's no space. Every inch of these schools is taken up by some academic piece to help these students. So I recognize and see it. So thank you for sharing and bringing it forward.
And we know our kids take up a lot of room, right? We come up with a lot of staff, we come up with a lot of equipment too, so we appreciate the room. And principals have been very kind in hosting us. They have that dreaded call every year where they're probably thinking, oh my God, Stacy's calling, what programs are here? I know they're thinking that actually. But they are all really, really supportive and welcoming to our kids and families. So, and we keep sending them. So we do appreciate that. We know it adds to the stress level of a building sometimes.
Ms. Farmer.
Thank you. My question is kind of connected to Mary's. How are we finding kids? Are doctors at the early level, are doctors referring kids to this district? How do we find kids who need that early intervention? How are parents connecting with us, those kinds of things?
We do have some information that we share with community members and send out. We have a child find responsibility to be able to say to families if you have a concern about your child. So there's literature on our website and that we distribute to let them know what their rights are as far as referring students. Really, it comes from their pediatrician, right? Family and friends, maybe a preschool teacher or babysitter. It really comes from people who are worried and noticing something doesn't seem right. And oftentimes, the evaluations don't end up, don't end up, I'm telling it, don't end up with any services specifically. But it is, we're trying to figure out how to get services as quickly as possible for our kids, and it's just a squeeze that we don't have enough, and we know there's more kids out there. We often are getting more kids in K that Sue Allen has never heard of, ever. They've received zero early intervention, and they're non-verbal, not potty trained, have autism, cognitively very low, and they have had no exposure at all. So they come in as a general ed student, and that's really hard for our system to maintain.
So I guess I'm wondering, is there a system that could be put in place that might help us a little bit more? Because we know kids who are diagnosed with autism, you know, as infants, six months old, you know, floor play, all those kinds of things that come into play that can help a child develop in a, I don't want to say better, but in a way that could kind of thwart or enhance some of the strategies we use for autism. And I see that we have increased the number of kids with autism, and I'm wondering if it's being identified at an earlier age.
I don't know if it's being, it might be being identified at an earlier age. It's just really prevalent, to be honest with you. There's a lot of kids who have a diagnosis of autism. As a school district, we don't require a medical diagnosis. If all of the characteristics are there and the student requires that type of programming, we'll make that classification as well. So there are options and support, but it really does boil down to space. So the State Ed Department would say, that's your problem, Stacy. You're going to have to figure out how to be a preschool evaluation site. And they want us to do that, and they're pushing us to do that. I'm digging my heels in because we can't support our school age students. We have a vacancy. We don't have enough school psychologists to service our own kids. We have a speech vacancy. So when the rubber meets the road, it is on us to make sure our preschool kids get services, but we're unable to overcompensate for shortages from agencies. So we just, I'm not hiding it. I say very openly, Sue Allen, right, knows that I say, have them call me because I'm not going to do it until we have the staff to do it, so.
Oh, so there's no staff for the early interventions?
Well, they're Monroe County providers. So all of what Sue Allen works with is Monroe County agencies and providers. They're the approved service providers. So the state would say, the county falls short, it's on the school district. And it is. I know that. But I'm not the only one in the county who's digging her heels in because we don't have the staff to support our school age kids.
Mr. Montgour.
Thank you. On page nine, we have four specific, well, four disabilities listed being prominent. Autism, learning disability, other health impairment, and speech or language impairment. Asking for some clarification on these. So the other health impairment, thirty, thirty-two percent this year, that's a really big number. Is there, it would be, are there, can you give me some examples of what other would be and like how large are they within that thirty-two percent? Because that's the biggest number there.
Yeah, it's our, it's our biggest one, even beyond autism or learning disability. So what factors into that? So it's a loose sort of catch-all, if I'm being real, because medical conditions are sort of globally captured in that classification area. But specifically, ADHD, anxiety, depression, they all fit into that, and ADD would all fit into that, and that's really prevalent diagnosis across our schools. So that's often a category that kids fit into in our district.
And regarding learning disability and intellectual disability, can you clarify the distinction between those for me?
Sure, absolutely. So a learning disability is really, it's a student, most of the time, who is of average intelligence, who has a different learning pathways, and there's sort of learning differences. So what it really looks at is specific disabilities in certain areas, reading, writing, listening, or math. There's all different categories of learning disability. Those are really, really specific, not to a student's abilities only, but to how they respond to academic instruction. So the regulations say, in order for a student to be designated as having a learning disability, even if they're not performing what their ability is, and there's something going on and we don't know what it is, we still have to attempt for students in grades K-four response to intervention model. And we're unable to classify in that category unless we've gone through those evidence-based interventions. Learning disabled kids are typically within general ed settings, working towards a local or region's diploma. Our intellectually disabled kids are not, they're working towards an alternate assessment. They're not taking those formal evaluations. They're often considered ungraded as their indicators are alternate and not necessarily per grade level. So those kids are in our twelve to one to three to one class, which is medically fragile and complex needs, our intellectually disabled kids. They might also be in our twelve one one NISA, which is a self-contained class for students all alternate assessment, or they might be in our six one one classrooms where we have students who are significantly functioning below.
So I ask that because when, we have a lot of anecdotal and rigorous experimental evidence that looks at things like the science of learning explicit instruction, and you referenced that on page seventeen. Those are things that are really successful in helping to reduce classifications and to increase declassifications. And it sounds like those kinds of things, and you've mentioned them with regard to explicit instruction embedded in Orton-Gillingham at ARC Core. I'm wondering if those kinds of things would be expected. We have seen that progress in other districts that have applied those teaching models specifically with regard to literacy and math. So I'm wondering if, it kind of goes back to Mr. Butler's question as well, you know, if these these numbers are rising, but do we have expectations or are we applying these in ways that we hope will, or expect to bring down the levels of classifications?
Yeah, so again, the classification rate is really hard with such a district with a lot of transientcy in and out. That part is hard. For us, it's really about the skills that students are learning when they're in school. So we do believe, as Melanie said, that every student deserves the right to really explicit instruction, right? Including our students working towards an alternate assessment. And what does that look like for them? And how do we scaffold some of their access to literacy development? It might not look the same, but a student who is a non-reader still has literacy skills to develop as far as recognizing words and being able to access vocabulary that they need to be able to navigate life. So we still have those expectations. We expect all of our kids to work towards a local or region's diploma. So that's what Mel said about our work as far as really trying to figure out how to, all of our teachers are working to implement our core with fidelity and figuring out how best to do it for our kids to make progress. Our teachers, on top of that, have the additional sort of ask of figuring out a new system or a new intervention and instruction. And now on top of that, now it's three grade levels. Now it's prioritizing. Now it's finding some commonality across standards, which is part of the work that we need to do to support people. So it's not really about, declassification's important, it's an area of weakness for us, but our kids are not achieving where they could be if we had some more really focused support in literacy instruction. And that's what part of those pilots are doing for our kids who are more significantly disabled.
Yeah, I wish I could provide the proper credit, but there's a statement, explicit instruction hurts no one, benefits everyone, and especially kids with learning challenges.
And in our training for specially designed instruction, which is one of our primary sort of topics that we deliver professional development, explicit instruction is its own portion of that training because every student requires explicit instruction. We kind of go through that and then adding on the specially designed piece. So we agree with you. It's really just good instruction for all kids.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to add on that. What you just described is our RTI or problem-solving process, which also leads to some of the frustration that you all might be hearing within buildings. Because to your point, that we would agree that before, to Stacy's, before we could go to a classification where a student could then go to an IP, maybe from a gen ed setting to, let's say, an ICT, the expectation is that you bring that student to a response to intervention or problem-solving meeting where then part of the interventions are explicit instruction in where the primary skill deficit is. What we're up against sometimes is that takes time. So that means that once you attend a problem-solving meeting, the teacher is expected to go back and implement that specific intervention for that primary skill deficit. They have to attempt that over a period of time because you can't do it for one or two weeks and say, the intervention didn't work. So it takes a period of time, sometimes three, four, five weeks, to apply that intervention and then be able to assess it to see if you're making gains. Then what happens sometimes is you might not see the achievement, so you go back to problem-solving again, and then you have to attempt a different research-based, direct instruction intervention, which then takes a period of time. Meanwhile, while that's going on, student could be frustrated, demonstrates behaviors. Then what happens? Phone calls come in, complaints come in about, so this is part of the larger system. So what you said, we all agree with, but part of that is everybody has to be patient and understand that the students do need to try explicit research-based interventions before you go to a classification. So sometimes we hear, well, why is the student in this room? The student is not achieving, behaviors are coming up. Well, which we agree with, it's difficult, but part of that is now the interventions that have to be put in place. So this is a very complicated, complex issue in that part of what we need to do is so that we don't go to, keep on increasing rates and classifying students is we have to be able to have the resources there for the students to get that explicit instruction. And sometimes that's hard to ask for one teacher to do in a classroom where you might have four or five students that are going through the RTI process. That goes back to what we talked about earlier. So it circles around and then you hear different issues in classrooms because people are frustrated because it takes time to go through this process before a student is found eligible. So, long answer, but I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Butler.
One more. So on page thirteen, where you talked about the indicators, and you mentioned that our compliance assurance plan, that we're making good progress. Is that, could you talk to me about what that progress is? Are the numbers getting better or are, like, we're doing more activity now to try to address it?
I would say both at this point. We have really, I think, limited or cut down on our removals and things that we might characterize unnecessary removals, things like removing a student because they're skipping. So if they skipped class, we're going to then remove them further from class, doesn't make sense. So I think we've really tightened up. We've also implemented a variety of alternatives to suspension, like we've talked about, different accountability projects, different types of consequences that aren't resulting in a removal. And then in terms of the progress towards each of the citations that we're working towards, that it really, surrounding that is our ability to provide the documentation that we've followed the procedure, we've held the manifestation within the timeframe, we've held the program review CSE to determine what services a student is going to receive while they're suspended. And then, oh, by the way, we've got their attendance and we've got a log that they were given, that two hours a week of consultant teacher services. So we are making progress on both fronts in terms of the alternatives to peace, to suspension and getting creative, but then also with regard to our documentation, ensuring that we're following those timelines and procedures and that we can, you know, prove that essentially.
So you feel like we're making progress towards that not being a citation anymore?
I do, but it's, I do, I do, but I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a long, it's going to be a long road. Because the flip side of that too, like, we do have some students that demonstrate super egregious behavior and suspension is warranted for a variety of reasons. So, so again, it really goes back to, I think, one of the things I talked about that we're working on is trying to identify those students that are getting removed earlier, making sure that we're having a conversation. Because if it's a big incident like a fight, it's the first incident that the student has had, like, that's very different than a student where we see a pattern of like disruption, insubordination, et cetera. And then the conversation becomes, what can we do for that student so to prevent that insubordination, the disruption to continue? What's behind that? What's the root cause? How can we try to shape that? And those are the conversations that we want folks to have at problem-solving meetings. And at the secondary level, that was one of the reasons for our assistant directors to be in buildings the four days a week. They sit at all the problem-solving meetings, they sit at the FBA and BIT facilitation meetings and behavior team meetings, and they're really part of the conversation right when a student starts to struggle behaviorally.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. And thank you all for coming and staying so late. I appreciate it. You can all sneak out now if you want. You don't have to run. All right, moving on to five point zero one, audit committee report. Mr. Butler.
Yes. So the audit committee met.
Microphone.
Thank you.
The audit committee met last night, as a matter of fact, and we had a presentation from Tom Zuber of Mango Metzger &amp; Barr, our audit partner, who reviewed their audit of our extra classroom activity fund, which are those funds raised by students and collected and managed by them with oversight, of course, from district personnel. Tom pointed out something that I hadn't thought about before, which was the intent of this program is to provide a learning experience for students where they learn how to manage a business. And he also pointed out that fact that our extra classroom activity fund is very active. The audit did identify a few small items and some opportunities for improvement, and the committee voted to accept the audit. We also reviewed their single audit of our federal Title I funds, which had no findings, which is a good result. And based on our past performance, we've been identified as a low-risk auditee, which is also a good thing, and the committee voted to accept this audit as well. We also had a really interesting presentation from an external consultant called Three Plus One, which is a firm that advises us on how to maximize the return we earn on funds that are held on behalf of taxpayers. We learned that they are not investing the money for us, just advising us on how to manage our cash strategically so that we can manage, minimize risk and maximize earnings. And we also learned that the district has significantly improved its ability to steward taxpayer dollars more so than last year. We reviewed the internal audit plan options that resulted from our annual risk assessment that was completed by the Bonadillo Group. We had a good discussion about which area we should select for our internal audit, and ultimately, the group reached consensus that the community schools program would be the area we select for this internal audit, not out of any concern that anything is wrong there, but because it is a relatively new area for us and has complex funding streams and sources of donations. We reviewed and approved the district responses to both the management letter from the auditors and the extra classroom activity fund report. And finally, one of our responsibilities as a committee is to review the district's corrective actions from past audits, and we did that, showing progress, especially on two recommendations concerning our procurement processes and the implementation, which is in progress, of a time and attendance system. So we recommend that the Board of Education accept all the audit documents reviewed by the audit committee last night.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. All right, moving on to five point zero two, acceptance of the extra classroom audit report.
Sean, can I make a motion that we accept the next four all in a package?
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stetzel. Any comments, questions, or concerns with that? All those in favor of moving them is one? That carries nine to zero. All right, moving. What?
We're so cool out.
I know, I love it. Jordan's getting tired. All right, can I say move five point zero six, the change order to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Felzrano, seconded by Mr. Maloney. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? The only comment I'm going to make, it's a refund of one hundred fifteen thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents to the district. With that, all those in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to the Monroe One BOSI's transportation contract approval. Can I say move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Ms. Slyke. Comments, questions, or concerns on that? Seeing that all is in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to the RASP One Agreement. Can I say move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Vice President Stetzel, seconded by Ms. Felzrano. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing that all is in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to the budget status and revenue status report. It's written information only. Does anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, moving along to the consent agenda. Can I say move the consent agenda to the table, please? Moved by Vice President Stetzel, seconded by Mr. Butler. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Seeing none, I would just like to thank the Greece Education Foundation for their numerous donations, which amounted to twenty-six thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-two cents, ninety-one cents, excuse me. And it was a host of things in several of our buildings, and it's much appreciated. And I'd also like to thank the Athena Extra Classroom Fund for their over four thousand dollars in donations to their building. With that, all those in favor? That passes nine to zero. All right, moving on to policies. Ten point zero one, this is the second read of policies. Just so you're aware, we'll go through these policies. Number seventy-five eleven has been pulled back for the committee to review. And with that, we'll start with twenty-three sixty, conflict of interest. Can I have somebody move the conflict of interest to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Vice President Stetzel. Any comments, questions, concerns on this? Seeing that all is in favor? Passes nine to zero. I'm going to make a motion that we move thirty-four fifty, fifty-six twenty-three, sixty-four thirty-one, seventy-one twenty, seventy-four eleven, seventy-five twenty, and eighty-two sixty-one is one.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Stetzel. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that?
It might make it go too quickly, wouldn't it? Never mind.
I appreciate your comment. All right. So is everybody good moving them as one? All right, with that, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Did you take seventy-three thirty out or did you include it?
Nope, I pulled it out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Nobody opposed. I'm not.
Okay, so that's nine zero. Moving on to seventy-three thirty now, can I say move that to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Maloney. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this one? Ms. Farmer.
Thank you. Okay, there's a few here. So I'm looking at the first paragraph on page one out of four, and I'm seeing where it talks about in the first paragraph, reasonable suspicion. I'm wondering how we determine what reasonable suspicion is. So do I ask questions and you all from policy respond, or do I just keep going?
You could ask, I mean, probably easier to answer than one at a time, and I'll probably have Deputy Fleming or Super Intens Molyneux want to answer. Go ahead, Super Intens Molyneux.
So that is kept relatively general. So when we say reasonable, we want the ability to have, through this policy, to have the ability to search or interrogate based on information that would come to security or to building administration. So a lot of times that could start with social media, for example, leads into an investigation, talk to a student, talk to a couple of students, find out that there's possibly, a student could have a weapon, drugs, something along that nature. That ability to say reasonable is enough for us to check a bag, check a locker, whatever it may be, just to ensure the safety of students. So reasonable is there to be general enough to allow us the ability to protect our students.
And that information is kind of comes from, or the suspicion could come from kids or social media or things like that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Farmer.
The next paragraph, if reasonable suspicion exists, to believe that a student has violated under, it is permissible for an authorized school official to search that student's outer clothing pockets, et cetera. Authorized school official would be who?
School administrators and security.
Okay. And our parents then notified once those, once that's happening, our parents brought into the loop or a phone call made to say we had to, you know, take the search a little bit further. Are we contacting parents?
Yeah, that's best practice, a hundred percent, that that is the expectation, that if a student is searched, that they are, parents are notified.
Okay, because, all right. Did you?
If you want me to clarify.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify.
I can clarify. Because when you're, there's also now because of our weapons detection, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that, and that was clear right from the beginning from our families through Deputy Fleming's events that he held at schools, the notices that went out, that if the, if there is a detection as they go through the ballards, that at that point, there is a secondary search, generally speaking, where you would look, sometimes it could be a belt buckle, whatever it may be. That is not where we're making phone calls during the, because that, we made clear from the beginning that that is expected as you come through the entry. So that, I do separate that out different than your searches that we typically saw before we had the weapons detection system.
So then down to searches and seizure of school property, which I totally think is fine. I'm just wondering if something might be added that would, so kids know that this stuff isn't theirs. And it seems like, Anna Maria, you were talking about that earlier, it seems like this could kind of be a connection to civics lesson in a sense that our taxpayers and the money that we get through our tax base is what provides these lockers, textbooks, computers, et cetera, for kids. I don't know if kids know that that really isn't theirs, whether it would make a difference, but I think it's important that kids are also included in language that isn't necessarily readable. This is, you know, legal language, if you will, but I think it's important that kids be informed. And I would like to see that be part of this policy, or this paragraph. So we believe in providing, okay.
I believe that this is part of our code of conduct, like, it's either noted in the code of conduct or is in some annual notice that goes out to families to understand exactly that, emails, you know, whatever's listed here. I believe that's done on an annual basis to fam, I know you asked me that last, I didn't even the answer, but I do believe in checking that that is annual notice. even the answer, but I do believe in checking that that is annual notice that goes out, either in the code of conduct or in some type of literature that goes out on a regular basis.
It's also included in the secondary, the secondary schools all perform a, an opening assembly to make clear not only the rules of the code of conduct, but also things that can be searched, for instance, as the superintendent referenced, the Chromebook, it's district property, those are things that can be confiscated or searched at any moment.
Thank you, that was gonna be my next question. I don't, is there anybody else? Okay, I'll just keep going. All right, so this is page two. We're looking at parent notification. We ask our, okay, so reasonable suspicion, our parents notify regardless, because we do ask our teachers to contact parents on a regular basis if there's issues in the classroom or if the kids are suspended. Are we also notifying parents in terms of what that might look like with, the parents or guardian will be notified if any illegal prohibited or dangerous articles are found in the student's locker, et cetera, et cetera. And that is done, it's always done. Parents are notified when those kinds of things take place.
It's documented, each individual school documented, all those pieces there, the search, what they found, purpose for it, is documented at the school, and parents are notified.
Okay. So, do we have the data? Is that, is that information kept and shared with people? Staff, us?
Capt, like, how many searches?
Yeah, it'd be a disciplinary referral.
Okay, because?
I mean, obviously, it's not gonna be public knowledge that Shaun McCabe got searched, but it would be tracked as a number.
Right. Because when we spoke earlier, you had said you didn't know.
No, I said, I know it's recorded. You asked, how long do we keep it? And I didn't have the answer.
Oh, I know what it was for. It was for when kids are taken in the back room with two adults because their belt buckle went off, or are those things?
During entry.
Yes. Are those things, are those things, they're not? Okay. Would it make sense that they would be?
No.
Why not?
Because it would be huge, I mean, when you look at the number of kids that go through the machines and you do some type of a secondary screening or winding, every kid, then you have to make that notify. If there was nothing found, if it was your belt buckle, you're then gonna make a notify. That seems excessive.
Do we, do we know the percentage of kids that might go through in the mornings that are secondary searched?
So, the system tracks the, each day, the percentage of hits that it gets, both through the Ballard pass-through system and on the bag scanner, so that is catalogued for a set period of time, I think it might be 30 days, but I'd have to verify that number. And we do have schools that are cataloguing, really for purposes of evaluating the system, what they are confiscating in terms of cell phones. So, for instance, Olympia just shared some data with Dr. Zaffetson and myself with the number of cell phones that they are confiscating each and every day. So, that's catalogued. The paragraph that you're referring to specifically within this policy, it's absolutely documented when something illicit is found on a student within that referral, because that is the justification and the reason for whatever consequence that child gets. So, that's stored electronically within the child's behavior record.
And the system also takes some kind of record in terms of what might find?
Are you referring to the screening system?
Yeah.
The screening system, the only record it's keeping is that there was a hit. So, whether that hit was from a, it's doubtful that it's a belt buckle, but if it's, you know, a really heavy metal binder, for instance, or if it's a cellphone, the system would not distinguish between that. It would simply be there were 112 pings out of 1,000 students walking through this system this morning.
That's, yes, okay.
Correct.
Right. It doesn't differentiate, but it does record.
Correct.
All right, thank you. So, I'm also wondering about when kids are being interviewed by school officials, and then the police or the law enforcement is asked to come in for whatever reason, are we contacting parents prior to the police coming and interviewing the student?
That is our practice, that we contact the parents to let them know that law enforcement is going to be interviewing them.
Because in the policy, it said the student's parent or guardian may be contacted. So, I just, I think about my own kid, you know, if it was my own kid, that could be kind of traumatizing if my kid was pulled into the back or whatever, and I would like to know as a parent. So, I'm speaking for, I guess, other parents who might like to know.
Where are you in it? What part of the?
This is the second paragraph, under questioning of students by school officials.
May be notified prior, it doesn't always happen. Sometimes, you know, if you have a phone call, police show up, parents don't answer the call, they might respond before you could talk to them. And they can't do that, unless it'd be there in the room of the student prior to a parent being notified at that point.
But there is, there?
It is possible, and so, but we do make attempts to do that. One, it's feasible, it's not, it was feasible, it's depending on what's happening.
So, what do you mean by feasible?
How disruptive the scene is at the time to be making any calls. Police arrive on scene before we're able to make a call, that might happen.
Is there follow-up with the parents?
Yes.
So, parents, at some point during their process, they're, they are, they are informed?
Yep.
Okay, so, okay, this next, this looks good. So, page three, I'm looking at, so, and we did talk about this, but I'm gonna bring this up anyway, because I'm assuming that the security that is working within our buildings now, based on the fact that we don't use the Greece police any longer, those, that they are the ones who are also summoned for the purpose of maintaining or restoring order, or they are the ones who go to school events or things like that?
I'll have Director Vocal, either one, Casey, answer that.
Thank you.
I was, just making sure this is on, I was walking up, could you just ask a question again, just so I make sure I have everything?
So, since the Greece police are no longer doing the security in the buildings, are you all the ones who will be at school events and things like that, or are we also bringing in the police, some of the police officers to do that work as well?
So, we're not, we're not bringing the police officers in for regular scheduled events. We will let them know if we have, you know, we're anticipating a large crowd at a football game, something like that, we do a notification to let them know, because, quite frankly, we think it's good to always have them around and, you know, people can see him on a, you know, on a, you know, friendly occasion. So, we certainly invite them as time allows, so that they have been present at those things, but we're not using them for security purposes at any events.
And the reason why I ask that is because the McCann, who was just elected as the new town supervisor, one of his campaign issues was that he wanted to bring the police back into the schools. So, be that as it may, we're just gonna leave that there, because it sounds like what we have gone through the past few years has been really good for our kids. And that, I think, you attributed to a lot of that.
Just to clarify, what this policy, though, is saying is that law enforcement officials may be summoned. So, it has nothing to who's regularly there, or if SROs, it's just, it's a policy that says that law enforcement officials may be summoned in order to conduct investigative, like, it, it's not in place of. So, even though our security is at all the events, and as far, what this is saying is that, that law enforcement may be used for maintaining or restoring order when the presence of officers is necessary to prevent injury. So, it's just a difference, I don't want you to, it's, we do have our security there, but that's not what this policy is actually saying. It's saying it may, that we may, we have the ability to call law enforcement when the need comes.
Yes.
Just to clarify the difference.
I agree. Okay, next section, investigative interviews of students by law enforcement officials. By the way, I wanna, I like the fact that we changed interrogations to interviews. It makes it seem a little bit more kid-friendly, if you will. So, this next paragraph, I'm sorry?
It's people-friendly.
People-friendly. So, the next paragraph, it says, in all other, okay, police authorities may question students for general investigations or general questions regarding crimes committed on school property in all other situations unless an immediate health or safety risk exists. If the police wish to speak to a student without a warrant, they should take the matter up directly with the student's parent or guardian. So, the police would not be talking to a student unless the student's parent or guardian had been contacted?
And I'll have Director Vocal from his past life.
So, I think it's just important to differentiate this, this, I interpret as, we're not opening our doors to the police to come in and question students regarding issues that are happening outside of school. So, if they needed to question a student about, you know, say, a larceny, or an assault, or some type of offense or crime that happened outside of school, we're not gonna provide them with just the space to come in and do their questioning there. If it is something that pertains to, you know, some, a crime that occurred at school or is affecting the safety at a school, then they're going to be there to question them in regards to that particular incident. And this, you know, in the school district, I would say the majority of the students are gonna qualify as juveniles or adolescents in the law, so they wouldn't be questioning students without a guardian present anyways.
Thank you.
So, we wouldn't, they essentially have to follow the exact same rules that we do when it comes to questioning. And questioning refers to somebody being questioned generally as a suspect in something. If they're interviewing a student who maybe witnessed something, or they just are trying to figure out, hey, what's going on, or it's something that's not criminal, that would, they wouldn't refer to that as questioning.
Okay, but if it was, the parents would be?
Certainly.
Contacted and be present.
Certainly.
So, then when you go down to the next section, the removal of students by law enforcement officials, it says, removal of students by police authorities will be allowed only when written permission from a parent or guardian is obtained.
Or?
I know, I'm not done, I'm just waiting for him to respond.
Well, there's nothing to respond to, yeah.
He's nodding, he's nodding.
Yep.
Or the officer has a warrant, and what, can you give me an example of what that might be like?
So, yes, warrant is a general term, there's several different kinds. The vast majority of what local law enforcement deal with are local criminal court warrants, and that can be an arrest warrant or a bench warrant. And those are reviewed and signed by judges. The civil or administrative warrants that you hear about in the news these days are not signed by judges. Greece Police Department does have a policy that they will not detain anyone for one of those administrative or civil warrants for, say, immigration violations. They're not permitted by their policy to do so. The only time they can even really inquire about it is if they have somebody in custody or detained on something else, and even then, they're not allowed to detain that person any longer than they normally would to process them. So, say, it was a shoplifting at a retail location in town, they can't hold on to that person for an extra couple hours to process them or anything like that while they're waiting for confirmation from federal authorities on a civil or even criminal federal warrant. They won't hold on to them any longer, so their policy forbids that from happening.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
And then, of course, we have the parent or guardian is present and gives consent, or the officer has legal grounds for arrest. And we already know because they're adolescents that parents would be there, or, yes?
Parents would be there for questioning, for interview, for purposes of gaining evidence, those types of things. Pedigree information that officers obtain is not questioning, and that essentially, so if it, say, in the instance of, say, there was a fight or an event at a school where the police showed up quickly because 911 was called, and they're clearly gonna get there before parents almost all the time, if they're just asking a question like, what's your name, you know, what's going on here, are you injured? Those types of things aren't questioning, those are just general inquiries for pedigree information. The other thing I'll note, too, is number four, in that an officer needs probable cause to make an arrest, and their probable cause, if there was a warrant, that would fall under that category in addition to having a warrant. They also, at that point, have the legal grounds for an arrest.
Awesome.
So, it kind of covers both, both of them. We would never see a physical copy of a warrant, it's almost never gonna be at the scene of where something is taking place. Those are search warrants, something completely separate. And before an officer makes an arrest for a warrant, they have to actually confirm it with the originating court. So, they'll contact a law enforcement agency, say it's a Rondiquay, who will then check with the court, they'll verify the physical presence of that warrant before they will actually detain that person and hold them for, you know, processing or to be brought back to that court to appear on the warrant.
So, there's a process. Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome, it's my pleasure.
All right, with that, does anybody else have any questions? All right, with that, all those in favor? That passes nine to zero. And you see the other policies are just for, there were no changes to them, they're before you as well, but there were no changes, so we don't need to vote on them. Moving on to 11.01, before we get into these committee reports, if you weren't at the committee meeting, or you don't have any information, it will be a no report, and that's okay. So, if we start, Mr. Bonagario, Code of Conduct.
Thank you. The Court of Conduct Committee met this afternoon. Appreciation to everyone who's put in the long day. We have been gathering suggestions from the committee members. At the moment, we have 14 specific suggestions for possible changes to either process or the code itself. I won't read through all of those, just some examples of some of the questions that are raised by some of them, might be things like, does the overarching narrative of the Code of Conduct create an imbalance between restorative practices and traditional consequences? How might we reorganize or streamline it for easier access and consistency? And what additional resources, personal or otherwise, might be needed to support a safe and productive learning environment? I'll just say, we don't all agree on everything that might be surprising, but we've had some, I think, really, you know, good, vigorous discussions about it, and I think that's, that's been helpful. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonagario. Culture Climate Committee Report, Ms. Slike, Board Member Slike.
Okay, this is the second year I'm on the committee. Last year, the senior high subcommittee didn't meet because of the blue ribbon work that the state was doing, so they kind of held things to see what would happen. They did have the last meeting, and that really went over the survey results of how teachers reacted in the middle school and high schools to having social emotional lessons either embedded in their classes, whatever. So, we did have that one meeting. This meeting was November 10th. I was out of town, so David sent me the, the update. So, this was a senior high. They looked over the, the social emotional screener that was given at the start of the year. Students take the survey to better help our schools understand their needs by collecting feedback on skills like perseverance, growth mindset, responsibility, and managing behavior. The data helps schools identify students needing support and targeted intervention, track progress, and make data-informed decisions to improve student well-being, learning environments, and overall academic performance. It also measures how students perceive their school and classroom, including their sense of belonging, safety, and teacher-student relationships. Each school was able to examine their data, discuss strengths and challenges, and think about a plan of action. Additionally, the committee spent time digging into the portrait of a graduate recently introduced by New York State as part of New York State and New York Inspires Plan. The committee examined overlap with Greece's profile of a graduate and identified some possible areas we need to look further into as we build our new strategic plan. The committee will meet again January 12th.
All right, moving on to District Improvement Team, Ms. Farmer.
Okay, so, I'm gonna thank Deputy Superintendent, Mr., what is it, Deputy Superintendent?
Fleming. Fleming.
Fleming, or Mr. Fleming. So the whole idea of this question or this conversation. So I attended the second meeting. The first meeting, we were at a conference. So I walked in, and I'm kind of a little lost, thinking what's happening. We're sitting in small groups. We're discussing different topics that Deputy Superintendent has brought up within our small group, and then we're reporting out. This was specifically related to professional learning, PLCs. And my concern was that we were focused singularly on state assessments, data analysis, in terms of how many kids got this question wrong? And what can we do? Should we make a CFA to help kids learn these skills? Maybe they, they're not sure how to label a graph. So, you know, you do a quick three-minute thing at the beginning of the class where kids will be directly targeted to what that might look like in terms of A, B intersections, simple things. Really simple things that cause a lot of points to be lost on a test. But now we're looking at not even, so whatever. But what I especially found that was terrific is I happened to be at another school and came across an article, and it was standing by itself. It wasn't in the books, so I was reading the article, and I thought, wow, this is perfect. Well, this, and I sent it to Mark and Michelle Barton, and I thought, and Mark responded, this was Zerata Hammond's work. This was work that this district did for many years in terms of how can we help our kids? And her, and what Mark said was that her big thing was, we have to get these PLCs up and running in order to make our kids, you know, do better. So I think, I liked, what he said was fantastic. It's, I'm glad to hear that this is a combination of looking at standards, because we're focusing on standards, and how the CFAs can be analyzed and how that can help kids to improve. So you would probably like that, so, yes. All right, that's it. Thank you.
All right, Grading Policy Committee Report, that's me. I believe in brevity. So we talked about the 55s, and we looked, talked about standard-based gradings. We'll report back as the committee continues to work. Moving on to Guardians of Equity Committee, Mr. Butler.
Thank you. Guardians Equity Committee is a committee that works to identify and address a concrete list of priorities that relate to the equity goals in the district. The team works to remove barriers to ensure that all students have the access and opportunities they need to reach their full potential. The Guardians of Equity help to defend that work, produce evidence of success, and persuade others to treat equity as a core value. It's made up of teachers and administrators that are members of their building based in Guardians Equity Groups. The committee met on November 24th, and the Longridge Guardians Team shared updates from their successful implementation of the quote-unquote "dilemma protocol", which helps teams identify and problem-solve inequity-related issues. The team shared how they work together to implement a literacy initiative to boost the reading level of struggling learners by identifying age-appropriate, culturally responsive texts that would appeal to students in need of reading support and intervention. Team spent the remainder of the meeting anchoring into the certain specific steps associated with the dilemma protocol and brainstorming the ways in which it can be applied in their own buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. The Parent Advisory Leadership Council, Ms. Seaman.
Thank you. So the Parent Advisory Leadership Council met on November 19th. We had a nice turnout. It was about 20 people. We had teachers and parents. We had cabinet and board members. We actually, hot off the press, we went over, spent the majority of the time reviewing the family survey 2025. So this is a family needs assessment that parents fill out. This was my first year and first-time meeting with the committee. So the results, they said, was pretty similar to what we found two years ago. But we spent the majority of the time looking at what were things that we could kind of combine together and maybe give some more support and growth to getting more assistance to our families out there. It was good. I also wanted to comment, too. One of the things that did come up was what the woman earlier was saying, that there are so many sites to go to, to look for all this information. And the idea is to absolutely mainstream this. So that was a good conversation and definitely a positive note. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seaman. Zero Emissions Bus Committee Report, Mr. Maloney.
Just to report a little bit here, we've been meeting since 2022, and the committee has, I missed the last meeting, believe it or not. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kalili, who did attend the last meeting and has more information than I do.
Thanks, Bill. Just a quick summary. I'll thank you later. So as Bill mentioned, we've been meeting since 2022. The mandate is still in place. We were not able to buy any new buses, according to the current mandate, after 2027. We've got to have our whole bus fleet converted by 2035. As Bill mentioned, we've been meeting, going to conferences, gathering information, talking to other districts, meeting with the state, meeting with NYSERTA. The long and short of it is, there's still a lot of questions out there. There's a lot of concerns still out there. It's very expensive to do. The committee has been pending putting an update together for the board. But through further discussion, we're going to wait until after the governor's budget in January to see if there are any significant changes to the current policy or regulations that may impact what the update will be. And once we do that, we'll put a formal memo update to the board on where we stand and what our recommendations may be for the path going forward, given if the current mandate will stay the same or whether there will be changes or not. Bill, anything else?
I'm going to have to have you kind of microphone, Dave.
No, as Romeo Kalili said, we continue to monitor the guidance coming from NYSERTA and SED and paying close attention to what is out there. But it's very unclear, and putting together a roadmap is very difficult at this time.
Thank you.
There is an extension that we're applying for in, I think, December, which hopefully will buy us a couple of years.
Yeah, that waiver is supposed to be released this month for districts to complete, but there's been no information from SED or NYSERTA about when that is going to come about.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. All right, Monroe County School Board's District Operations Committee Report. Superintendent Smoline attended, so we'll let him.
Yep. The District Operations Committee met on November 19th. The focus of the presentation was special education and the board packet. Presentation covered how board members should approach and understand the information that you receive in your packets regarding NIPs and 504s. Also discussed the board's role within special education programs and services.
Thank you, Superintendent Smoline. Monroe County School Board's Legislative Committee Report. We have no report on that. And Monroe County School Board's Information Exchange Committee Report, Board Member Falsarano.
So the Information Exchange Committee met November 12th. I was away, but I was able to get the wonderful support from the Monroe County Board, and they sent me the information. There was, the topic was Lockdown Drills 101. Such a light topic to end the evening. From research to practice, and it was presented by this Dr. Jacqueline Shildkraut. And she is the executive director at the Gun Violence Research Consortium at the Rockefeller Institute of Government. She shared in her research that it was prompted, actually, by a mass shooting in her hometown, which led to an in-depth look at an active shooter practices, at active shooter practices around the country. Lockdown drills, a practice currently used in 98% of public K-12 schools nationwide, have raised concerns about potential trauma they cause to students, faculty, and staff who participate in them. While news stories of drills gone wrong have exacerbated such concerns, research into these practices shows the opposite, that when conducted in a trauma-informed approach using best practices, lockdown drills can empower students and staff to respond to emergencies and lead to other positive outcomes. And she went on to cite that just by taking the step of locking the door, you increase the survival rate and prevent injuries and deaths by 59 to 79%. She talked about procedural integrity, meaning knowing the steps and following them. And she went on to say, it's not what you do, it's how you do it. And she was really insistent on everyone, all staff, including custodians, cafe staff, being trained on the procedures when a lockdown is called, because you never know where that point of entry is or what's happening and where it is. So she was very insistent about that. But the rest of the procedure sounded like things what we have in place. Move away from the door, conceal, turn out lights, move away from the door, conceal, and do not answer the door. She mentioned that consistency across the building, the district, and the state are key for optimally being prepared in case that worst day ever does arrive. She conducted a very large study over a three- to four-year period in the Syracuse City School District, and her research has led to a conclusion that when students and staff have developed the muscle memory, their anxiety levels about a risk event are lowered and that there is an increased sense of empowerment. So the next meeting of this committee is January the 14th.
Thank you, Ms. Falsarano. Just something I'm going to put out to my colleagues on the board. It's now 20 after 9:00. We've added these committee reports. They're running long. You know, if we can just be brief, try to, a couple, a couple highlights to your committee, unless there's something earth-shattering coming out of your committee. I think it would be good if we could try to have a little bit of brevity, because we've added all these reports, so we've just added about 30 minutes. Now we all have board member comments on top of that, which is probably going to be another 30 minutes, you know, for the staff that have all been here since 7:00 or earlier this morning and for other people at work, et cetera. You know, getting out of a board meeting at 10:00 is what we had in the budget season and the rest of the year, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. So I'd like everybody, you know, next month with their committee reports to try to consolidate them a little bit. And I would really prefer, if you're not at the meeting, there's no report. If the board member isn't in attendance, then there should be no report. We shouldn't be getting it from a staff member or somebody else. It should just be, you know, if you were in attendance, the highlights of the meeting. So with that, moving forward, Superintendent comments.
I'll cut some of these comments down a little bit.
How about that?
Here, just give them to me. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the outstanding work of our Community Schools Team under the leadership of Kelly Spredudo, as well as our partnerships with Center for Youth and Food League. Their commitment to our, supporting our students, our staff, our community during the holiday seasons really makes an incredible impact for those families. And as we go into the holiday season now, I know that they'll continue that work. And I'm just really grateful to have that team and the partnerships to support our families. So I wanted to recognize them. I also just wanted to recognize an incredible group of students who represented Greece at the Rock to Change Summit on Friday, November 21st. 15 of our students from our four high schools and the Phoenix Academy, they served on this year's planning team along with students from Churchville-Chile and the Rochester City School District. These students, they chose servant leadership as their theme for the day, and they led the entire conference, including breakout sessions for more than 350 students from districts throughout the region. So I was really proud that day for the work that they put in and what they led at this event. I just also want to have a special thank you to Deputy Superintendent Mark Fleming, who has stepped up in place of our Director of Equity and led that work with our Equity Tosa, Cam Groutmann, as well. So thank you. That was a lot of time, a lot of effort, but it definitely paid off. And just finally, as we tradition, or transition into the holiday season, I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and hope the coming weeks you can find some joy and some time to relax with family and maybe forget about work sometimes and just enjoy the season, so, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Smoline. Bailey, you're up, and you can talk as long as you want.
No, I kind of have the same topic as Mr. Smoline, so this will be good.
I stole it.
A little summary. So you covered my bases already with kind of explaining what Rock's Change is and how the three school districts that planned it this year. And it really was such a successful event. Our three kind of breakout sessions in that servant leadership bubble was lift others up, leading through understanding, and lead where you are. So the theme kind of helped us focus on providing for and empowering others instead of gaining more power for ourselves. So I think it was a very, I think everyone kind of could feel servant leadership in themselves and kind of relate to that in a way. I know from experiencing the breakout rooms that it was just such an inspiring room to be in, filled with so much energy and passion and open-mindedness for everybody. I think that Rock's Change is such a special place where people feel safe to share personal stories and relate to others and just kind of getting to feel seen and hearing people out. And I think it's really a positive environment to be in. Again, I want to extend a huge thank you to Mr. Fleming and Ms. Groutmann for all their help with planning, the countless hours. I seriously couldn't have done it without you guys, so thank you so much. And then Mr. Smoline for the amazing speech in the beginning that was incredible and just brought the energy of the room really alive, so I really appreciate that. And for everyone else who works behind the scenes to make that event happen. I know there's a committee that's been working on it every year to make sure that it's a tradition and that it stays alive, so thank you for that. And everybody, enjoy your break and the holidays, and thank you so much.
Thanks, Bailey. All right, board member comments. Who's up? Mr. Butler?
All right, I'll be very brief. I want to, today is something called Giving Tuesday. It follows Cyber Monday, which followed Black Friday. And so if you care about this district, one of the ways you can show that support on Rock the Day is to go to rocktheday.org and make a donation to the Greece Education Foundation. Board President shared today that the GEF gave over $26,000 in needed supplies to our classrooms. So I'll declare my conflict of interest that my wife is the president of that board right now. But that doesn't, shouldn't change whether you donate or not. It's a, it's a great cause, and if you're, if you're still watching this broadcast, you certainly care about education in Greece, so you should probably make, you probably already made a donation to the Greece Education Foundation. And the only other thing that, two quick things. Greece Central School District, I think, is a great place to work, and there's always positions available at the district. And so please go to our website and figure out how you can make a career at Greece Central Schools. And lastly, I'll add, Happy Holidays. I want to say a thank you to all of the teachers, administrators, building staff who are going to see those students who are struggling for all kinds of reasons during the holiday season. It's not always jolly for everybody. And so I want to thank those teachers and administrators and staff who are looking out for those students who need a little extra love during the holiday season. Thank you.
Ms. Farmer?
Sure. So I just want to say that starting December 5th, City Hall Mayor and the mayor and the county executive are going to do a kickoff for the Week of International Human Rights. And there will be various things throughout the week. If you are interested in Google it, and you'll see things all over the place. The other thing I want to talk about quickly is climate education. I see that as being a good opportunity, knowing many sportsmen and outdoorsmen, they believe and see that the climate is often, they think that, you know, it's cyclical. We go up and down and around, and so these are the people that I know. And so I think it would be a great opportunity for kids to be able to use a lot of critical thinking skills. And it's not one or the other. Sometimes it's both. And as far as reshaping our secondary schools, it sounds like it's going to be a little bit more like when I was in high school, where kids would leave half the day and go to, what was it called? It wasn't called BOCES, Co-op or what? Co-op. Triple, AAA? Anyway, I think if we shape this right, we can have an alternative education that could allow so many kids who are feeling disengaged from the typical sit in your seats, get your time. So everything's driven, supposed to be driven by the standards, so we have a lot of work ahead of us, and we could make it be positive. Or just continue along. All right, and everybody have a great couple of weeks off. I guess it's another 14-day, 16-day holiday. And I couldn't say it better. Mr. Butler, Todd, thank you for recognizing that not everybody's jolly. Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Good. Mr. Bargogrio?
My apologies in advance.
My apologies in advance.
Oh, boy.
I'll be, I'll be fast.
I'm getting headache.
So I do want to make some additional comments on New York Inspires, Inspires. And I do have concerns, and one of them, I think, is echoed by a report from the University of California at San Diego, which last month issued an admissions report detailing what it called a steep decline in academic preparation of its entering first-year students, particularly in math. The report noted incoming, the number of incoming students in need of remedial math surged in recent years at much as 3,000%, and noted that colleges around the country were reporting similar trends. One explanation given was that grades, quote, grade, this isn't a quote from the report, but grades have stopped meaning anything, that the age of grade inflation is also the age of achievement deflation, where we're giving more and more As to students who are learning less and less. The, the point, I think, to all of this is, we've got a lot of work to do to protect education in Greece. We need to be really vigilant, I think, Mr. Zaffetz, Dr. Zaffetz, again, for bringing that report. I continue to applaud things that are really showing proof of impact and things like the science of learning. We continue to applaud our district in pursuing those. I hope we'll consider making, applying some alternative programming in math, which might give us at least a second or third option to look at alternative strategies beyond the state's doubling down in inquiry learning. And, and we need to be careful about what we do. We're not just equipping our kids with technology. Often, we're enabling them, and we need to make sure our classrooms remain places of learning for kids who want to learn and not just daycare centers for kids who want to be unruly. With that positive note, happy and safe holidays to everyone.
Mr. Maloney? Oh. Well, not yet. I got to make sure Ms. Seaman's good and Vice President Stutzel's good.
Happy holidays, everyone.
All right. I just have, I'm going to be super brief, so Mr. Maloney can get to his. I want to congratulate Bailey. My little birdies told me that maybe you have to lead in the musical at Athena. Is that correct? Congratulations. And I want to wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Enjoy the time with your family. Enjoy the time off. Recharge. It's going to be a busy spring from January till June for the board, for the school districts, so recharge your batteries, enjoy some time over the break. Eat, drink, be merry, and remember those that are less fortunate. With that, Mr. Maloney, go ahead.
I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I'd like to adjourn this, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. Second by Vice President Stutzel. All those in favor? That passes eight to one.